I'll call this, um, meeting to order on Monday, June the 15th, 2015. I want to welcome everyone. Uh, tonight, we have the Associate Pastor from, it's a Smart Assembly of God, but it's really called something else. And that's Pastor Dyke Verkirk. He's tile-like shell, but if you want to, he's going to come forward and, uh, give our invocation, also lead us into place of flag. So would everyone please rise?
Let's bow our heads for prayer. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you and ask you, Father, for your favor, your blessing over these proceedings. I pray, Lord, that you would be with Mayor Max Bacon, Lord, these council. And pray that your blessing will be over us, Lord, that you'll give us wisdom and guidance in your presence, Lord, in everything that is done, that your name would be glorified, this city would be blessed. In Jesus' name we ask it. Amen. Would you say the pledge with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those folks that are new in town or looking for change, I'm sure the folks at, at the Old Smart Assembly of God, it's Life, um, gosh, Shell's going to shoot because I forgot the name of his church. They're on King Springs Road, right across from Ryan Park, so. Agenda changes as well. The only thing that we have on the agenda where there is a change, there'll be two items that will be tabled. Item 4A, that item will be tabled until July the 6th. Also, item 4D, it will be tabled until July the 6th. I think those are the only ones on the agenda that are scheduled to be tabled. Under the Merrill report, I'd just like just to briefly mention that, uh, longtime Smart resident and former city council member Pete Wood passed away last Wednesday. His services were yesterday at, uh, Smart First Baptist Church. Pete served on the council for 20 years here, and prior to that, he was on the Downtown Development Authority. And, um, uh, he was a very, very, very big part, not only of this city and community, but also of what we've done in the downtown. Uh, he probably had as much to do with it along with Jim Hawkins and other folks. Um, he was a very smart guy. He was, uh, all about finances. He was a banker. And, um, he's going to be missed. His wife Lily and Stephen and Marilyn and Hilda, his sister, and Sammy, um, I know they're going to miss him. Uh, he was a good man, and, uh, he served this community and this, and this city well for 20 years, so. He was 81 years old, so, a good man. Item 4A, land issues zoning annexation. As I mentioned, A 2015 dash 165, that will be tabled until the 6th. I don't know if you want to officially do that, uh, that's in Terry Nullwich's district. You want to make that motion, Terry?
Yes, at this time, I move to table item 4A. This is item 2015 dash 165. It is zoning request Z 15 dash 009 rezoning from R 15 to RAD conditional for the development of two single-family homes, 0.35 acres, land lot 489. The address is 2680 Grady Street. The applicant is Pritchard Brothers Incorporated. They have requested this to be tabled until July 6th, 2015.
Motion second to table this to July 6th, 2015. Although some favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Item 4B, under land issue zoning annexation, 25th, 2015 dash 166, public hearing zoning request Z 15 dash 008 rezoning from R 15 to RAD conditional for the development of five single-family homes, 1.27 acres, land lot 488, 1091, 1107, and 1121 Bank Street, Pritchard Brothers, Inc. I know the applicant is here. Uh, can you give us the background, please?
Yes, Pritchard Brothers, Inc., is requesting this rezoning, um, for the development of five residential lots. The applicant plans to demolish the two existing homes and construct five new single-family residences at a density of 3.94 units per acre.
Okay. Uh, this is in Ms. Nullwich's, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, or they would like to make any public comment concerning this, uh, rezoning request? All right, uh, for those that, uh, would like to speak, uh, I want to get everybody sworn in all at one time. So if you'll come forward, and even if you end up, you don't want to speak after you hear the testimony, then you don't have to, but I want to get everybody sworn in. We'll put like a, some kind of neon marker on you so we'll know you've been sworn in. There's a joke. This sounds like a line dancing group or something. Uh, Jeffrey, do any of the, does applicant need to be sworn in? Anybody, anybody that's going to make testimony needs to be sworn in, doesn't it? Unless they're a lawyer?
Yes.
Anybody's going to give testimony? Frank, yeah?
The applicant doesn't have.
Oh, really? Yeah, she likes to tell the truth. Frank Pritchard's a good man. If y'all just have a seat, and I just wanted to remind you, I've got intelligent folks, but once we start into the, giving you the opportunity to speak, if you're just listening to what everybody's saying, if three or four people say the same thing, then we pretty much get it. So, this is in Ms. Terry Nullwich's district, Ms. Nullwich.
This is, and I'd like to invite Rusty Martin to come give a little bit more background on this issue.
Good evening. Uh, this rezoning case was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 11th. They recommended denial by vote of four to two. Tony Joe has summed up this request quite simply. It's, it's a rezoning of three existing lots to five lots from R 15 RAD conditional. Uh, a little background on this, these three lots were rezoned back in 2006 from R 15 RAD, from three lots to five lots. In 2007, uh, an additional lot was added and rezoned, and the subdivision was reconfigured. Uh, 2008, 2009, no substantial development had occurred on the property, and since it was a conditional zoning, uh, the property reverted back to its R 15 zoning classification and original lot sizes and, and everything else. Um, so that's where we're at today. We're, we've moved forward to 2015, and, uh, we're back with a request to re-rezone the, the three, uh, original lots and rezon them back to the, the plan that was approved in 2006, essentially. Um, I'll go on to give you a little bit more, uh, description of the property. The, the subject property is R 15, the properties to the north, west, and south are RAD, and the properties to the, to the east are, uh, zoned R 15. The subject parcel is a 1.27 acres. It's located in Ward 3. There's existing two single-family homes on the property, and, uh, they're proposing to build five at a density of 3.94 units per acre. Uh, the subject property has a future land use designation, a moderate-density residential, which, uh, basically means it's got to remain under 4.5 units per acre. Um, the adjoining property in northwest and south are, are all moderate-density residential, uh, land use classification. The adjoining properties to the east are medium density, which is below six units per acre. Here's the proposed site plan that the applicant has submitted with the rezoning application. They're requesting a, uh, front setback of 30 feet, a rear setback of 30, um, exterior side setbacks, and that's on Lot 1 and 5 of 10 feet, and then an interior setback of zero feet with a minimum of 15, with a minimum of 10 feet. Um, that's the one deviation from the original plan that they've added here, is they're going down to a 10-foot, uh, building separation as opposed to 15 feet. I've highlighted here, just to show you where their proposed stormwater detention facilities are going to be located. Each house is going to have its own facility, and it'll be sized appropriately to, uh, maintain city requirements. Here's an example of potential driveway locations. This was a, uh, discussion, uh, topic at the PNZ meeting. Some residents had concerns about, uh, cars pulling into a front entry drive and then having to back out onto Bank Street. Um, during the 30 days in between the PNZ meeting and this meeting, uh, the applicant went and did a, did a potential, uh, sketch of what, what it might look like with some of these houses that they proposed, and how they can accommodate turnaround so you can pull headfirst out into, uh, Bank Street. And if you look at some of these building separations, they're at 18, 15 feet. There's one that's 10 feet, but most of them are all over 15 feet between buildings. This is another illustration of what it might look like. There's a slight change on the two middle lots. These are the proposed home elevations that the applicant submitted with the application. This is subject property as it stands today. These are pictures of adjacent property, just to give you an idea of what's in the Uh, community development recommends approval of the requested zoning from R 15 RAD conditional for the construction of five new single-family residences at a density of 3.94 units per acre, um, with the following conditions. I'm not going to read the standard conditions, I'll just highlight them for you. Basically, number one, the composition of the home shall be a mixture of brick, stone, hardy plank, or stucco. Number two, the stormwater management facility shall be placed and screened appropriately to be unobtrusive to homes inside and outside of development. Number three, all developments, all utilities within the development shall be underground. Number four, any traffic improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer shall be the responsibility of the developer. Uh, number five, the development of any streets shall conform to the city's standards for public rights way. Number six, no debris should be buried on any lot. Number seven, uh, the developer will install decorative streetlights. Number eight, the developer allows city's tree ordinance. Number nine, all landscape plans will be prepared and stamped by a Georgia-registered landscape architect. Number 10, all yards and common areas to be sodded. Uh, and number 11 provides a, a planning schedule for each lot. Special condition number 12, uh, the development shall maintain the following minimum setbacks, a front setback of 30 feet, interior side of zero with a minimum of 10 feet between buildings, uh, exterior sides on lots 1 and 5 of 10 feet, and a rear setback of 30. Uh, each lot shall have a minimum driveway length of 22 feet, and that's measured from back sidewalk to front edge of the, of the house. Uh, number 14, the right-of-way along Bank Street shall be increased 50 foot. Um, therefore, a dedication of five feet is required. Number 15, approval of the rezoning shall be conditioned upon the site plan dated, uh, 5/7/2014 created by DGM Land Planning. Number 16, the applicant shall be bound to the elevation submitted and dated, uh, 4/10/2015. And finally, there's these two last stipulations that were added as a result of the discussion at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. Uh, number 17, the developer shall install decorative wrought iron fencing and brick columns along Bank Street similar to the existing fence of cottages at Parkview Village. And number 18, each home should provide a driveway with a turnaround area to allow cars to pull headfirst onto Bank Street. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
See, I actually do have a question. Let me hop back over to that note. With regards to the stormwater, do we have any other developments in the city that we've done lately that have these individual kind of detention?
It's a relatively new, uh, type of managing, uh, stormwater, man, stormwater in the city. Um, we have a few homes that do have them.
How, what, what kind of track record do those have?
Um, I'm not the best person to answer that question. Eric Randall would probably be the best person, but I can get that answer for you.
I mean, do we have, I mean, do we have a general comfort level with these kinds of, of facilities?
I know the city engineer reviews all specifications for all systems that are proposed, and usually they're proprietary systems, so, um, they're, they're usually pretty vetted, and he, he feels comfortable that they're achieving our code.
And then I was looking at the illustrations of the driveways because I know that that has been a concern. I mean, obviously, there are three driveways there right now. This would increase that number potentially by two driveways, so there'd be five driveways. But then I saw one illustration that has four driveways, so which would mean an increase of just one driveway. And I know that the, the engineer is, is comfortable with that also, but I wanted to, do they know yet if it's going to be four or five driveways?
Um, I don't think they know at this point. Um, that was just an illustration to show you that they could accomplish being able to provide turnarounds for each home.
Okay.
Any other questions, Rusty?
Mr. Martin, I'm trying to pull up our website to get to the code, and I'm not quite there yet, but a number of standard conditions were dropped from this. Can you, or do you have available what those were and why?
A number of standard conditions were dropped?
Yeah, in the staff memo, it says standard conditions, and it lists half a dozen, did not apply or were not included.
Okay, for, those are standard conditions that are applied through Section 1201 of the zoning ordinance, and those are more applicable to full-scale subdivisions that provide their own streets and infrastructure. These houses are being constructed on, on an existing street, and there's no provision for a new street within the application as it's submitted. So, it's, the stuff that's not required is because it's not, it's not part of the application.
So will, there will not be underground utilities, then?
Uh, there will, because there's a standard condition that requires them to be underground.
Well, but that's one of the ones, it says, the standard conditions 2, 3, 4, 8, 9, and 17 are not applicable, and that includes underground utilities.
I know this reads funny, but that's 2, 2, 3, 4, 8, 9, and 17 of Section 1201. So, it's not the numbering sequence underneath it, it's what's applied to Section 1201. It goes, requirements number 2, 3, 4, 8, 9, 17 from Section 1201 of the zoning code are not applicable.
So, Rusty, if you have four driveways, then, then will one house, will two houses share a driveway?
Uh, I imagine that would be how it, it would be, but I don't think that's what the applicant is requesting at this time.
Yeah, I think the illustration looked like it was one driveway coming off the street that then forked.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's sort of a, a shared driveway, or, you know, it serves two lots.
These were upside down.
Any other questions, Mr. Martin? All right. No other questions, okay? Thank you, Rusty.
I'd like to ask the applicant to come up, please.
A long time. Mayor, Councilman. We were involved, we've been involved in Smart since 2002, very much involved in Lois Point. We moved over to Parkview Village, built all of the homes there. Was, we're involved extensively in the rezoning application there, and if you recall, one of the things that we did was met with a number of the homeowners and that homeowners in the area to try to obtain approval and input from them when we developed elevations. And the result of the elevations in the Parkview Village were collaboration of our designer and many of the members of the city who came out and helped and assisted in that. We, you approved, um, Parkview Village, not without opposition. Um, there was a petition that was presented to you that had 52 signatures. Um, so you did have significant opposition at that particular time. The next project that we did was, um, Parkview Village Phase 2. Once again, there was some opposition. Some of those lots in that particular subdivision, now that is the subdivision that is bounded by Guthrie Street on the west and Bank Street on the south. And, uh, there are actually two lots in that subdivision that are 50 feet wide. The reason that the other three lots are larger is because better than 70% of the other, of two of those lots is taken up by floodplain, and they actually are in floodplain. So there's been some, um, discussion among the neighbors that it's a shame that we can't have very large lots similar to those that were as a part of Parkview Village Phase You will have opposition tonight. They'll be well represented based upon the reading of the oaths. Um, and I, I would ask that, um, for your support in this because it does meet the requirements that have been presented to you and have been voted on in the past. One small change, Rusty mentioned that this was pulled as a result of a lack of, lack of activity. Um, this was approved in 2006. We actually had it platted and approved by mayor and all of the city officials, and it was then in December of '08, after foreclosure, that we requested that this revert back to its original state. So it was not for a lack of activity, although I'm sure that played into it. But on December 30th, Ken issued a letter bringing this back to its original state. The drawing that you have of the proposed site plan, we're requesting a zero lot line. In Parkview Village, one of the problems that we had is that we had, if we varied a lot and wanted to move it eight feet from the property line, or six feet from the property line, in order to accommodate the house plan, we could still be 10 to 15 feet from the adjoining property, but it was required because of the zoning steps that we had to come in before mayor and council and obtain a variance. And I think we obtained eight variances in Parkview Village. Um, I think that's the number. But that required coming before mayor and council each of those times. So one of the things that we've done in this particular, um, example is we've got a zero lot line. It's not our intent to build on zero lot line. It's our intent to, to always have 10 feet between homes, but be able to move it up closer to the property line so as to facilitate the construction of the, the home next door or that home. So, the, the only way that we could show this was with a zero lot line, and that would avoid any need for appearing before you in the future for, for a variance. I had contact with several of the neighbors prior to the, um, meeting of the zoning board before their refusal, and at that particular time, it was my impression that there were concerns about the number of driveways that were entering. And a question was asked as to whether or not we could combine two of the driveways into one, and that was what you saw in one of those illustrations. We do not want to build, um, a, a single driveway for two homes unless it is absolutely necessary, and you'll see in another zoning proposal later on this evening that it is necessary. Um, so that was for illustration purposes primarily. What I did there was I took five of the homes that are supposed, are going to be built and, um, superimposed them on that drawing. Is there a way we can get that one? This is what we're, uh, the other one. This one shows it. Now, there's 10 foot between lots 2 and 3, but that's only because I used the same drawing for a common driveway as for separate driveways. It's anticipated that we will move, have more than 10 feet between those products, and each of these will be redeveloped. But in each of these, you're saying, as Rusty had indicated, only one of them had a, a 10-foot between houses, the majority of them were 18 feet. On the outside, we were proposing that we had a 10-foot, 10-foot setback from the outside homes to give more flexibility there. The homes that we prepared, if we built the five homes that are shown there, which probably will be built in one form or another, we would have an average square footage of 3,083 square feet. Each of these will be on a basement. Because of the contour of the, of the land, it falls away from the street, and it is, there's no way that we can, um, build a home without a basement. Each of the homes will also have 10-foot ceilings on the first floor and an enclosed screen porch, and that is shown, is illustrated on the drawing that you're looking at now. Um, the concern when I originally talked to folks was the price point, and what we had anticipated was an average selling price of $500,000 per home, and you can tell from the square footage of 3,083 with a basement that that is a very realistic, um, goal. We actually think that will be above that. There are, next to, across the street at Parkview Village, there are several lots that are less than 50, uh, two lots less than 50 foot in width, and most of them have a, an average, an area of about 7,919 square foot is the average on, uh, square footage of those lots. The average of the lots that we'll be having is a little more than 11,000 square feet. So that, size-wise, they're going to be good. They're going to have, uh, wonderful areas for play in the rear, uh, and they'll be, um, situated nicely on the lot, so there will be some movement forward and backwards. One of the questions was raised... One of the questions was raised is we don't want it to look like row houses, and I agree. And, but at this particular time, we cannot tell how far back these homes can go, because the sewer lines are very shallow on Bank Street, and we must access the sewer from the first floor into that. So we can't move it back too far. If we move it back too far, then we would not have sufficient elevation change to allow sewer to drain from it. The elevations are a combination of Frank Betts elevations and Janice Phan elevations. And I think y'all have had excellent results from both of those designers. At this time, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Now, was there any thought given at all to take this from five down to four, so that it would be, it wouldn't be so crowded?
Well, I don't think it'll be crowded. There'll be far more room than there is across the street and behind in Parkview Village. So it's quite similar. The lots will be as large or larger than Parkview Village, particularly in depth. The way that this rezoning has occurred is that Ronnie Rains had, came to me, I'm no longer building, I'm too old. So Ronnie came to me and asked me if we would, so we have a contract with Ronnie to supply him with five lots. Ronnie is the person who finished out Monty Hewitt's development over on, across the railroad tracks.
Riley's lot.
Pardon?
Riley's lot.
Right, correct, thank you.
Yeah, I just, I just think that maybe the, the neighbors would not be as concerned if it were four houses that you were building, because it's going to be a nice addition to the area, but five may be just pushing it a little bit further than what, I mean, I know, I know as a builder, you'd like to get the, the most out of, out of this property that you could. All I'm saying, would you give any thought to reducing it or so?
We have given thought to it. Unfortunately, at this time, there's no way for me to do that because of the contract that I have with Mr. Rains.
There's always a way, Mr. Pritchard. You know that.
Well, the other thing is, is that the cost of the lots would go up substantially as a result of that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Pritchard, can you describe to us the, the drainage or storm drainage system? Or do you have an engineer here that can, or somebody? I mean, I, I think I know, but can you clue me in on that a little better?
I have limited knowledge of it. I have depended upon our engineers. But it's a flow well concept in which they do the calculations of the water runoff on the impervious surface and collect that water instead of in a retention pond and a cisterns that are below the surface of the water. And these are engineered, they're actually, there will be tests that will be run to create, much like septic tank, to determine the permeability of the soil and the leakage of the soil, water into the soil.
So is there a, a series of, of pipes running from these cisterns like a septic tank, or is it just a cistern itself?
Pipes, pipes run, you mean, like in a septic tank system?
Yes.
No, there are not.
Okay, so you're relying on just the area around the cistern itself?
Correct. And these are calculated.
And is it, is it stone filled, or?
Yes.
Okay. Do you, do you happen to know what that calculation was, as far as the area, the volume, I mean?
I was not aware that this would be asked if it, if it was.
I understand that.
I could, but each one of them has to be calculated, dependent, and it's dependent upon the impervious surface of the house. All of the water from the drains go into these. So there's very little surface water that is, is collected.
Am I correct, in, in looking at the drawing that Rusty showed us a few minutes ago, it looks like that, that cistern extends basically the length of the property east to west? Is that a fair statement?
Individual per home, are there five individual cisterns, or is this one long?
Individual systems.
So that was just more an overlay rectangle of?
Yeah.
Where they could be located.
Where they would go, but not a map of the cistern itself.
Right, each of these has to be engineered for the house, and they would be engineered and submitted to Rusty and then to the city engineer for approval.
And I, I, I understand the, the concept of it, and I guess I'm, my concern is, the reason for the volume is, you, you have a, a pit, basically, which, you have a cistern which is basically a, a pit that you filled up with gravel or some type, some size of stone, and that stone is volume as well. And what's coming, what you're telling me is everything coming off of the roof is going into a, a gutter system on the house that's being piped into these cisterns? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
What kind of maintenance is required of the homeowners to keep this functioning? I mean, you know, like in, in Parkview, you've got one detention facility, you know, that's one thing that has to be maintained, and it's not maintained by the homeowner, it's maintained by the HOA, you know? What, what is required of the individual homeowners to keep these things up and running? You know, my, my concern being that if you have a house that is vacant for an extended period, you have a house maybe isn't getting the upkeep or the maintenance for an extended period, what does, what does that mean? Well, you know, I mean, I'm assuming the homeowners will be aware that this is something that, that is their responsibility, but how, how labor intensive, how maintenance intensive are these cisterns?
I have not maintained one. So I can't answer that particular question. It's my understanding that they're easily maintained, more easily than a septic tank system. However, I can get those answers for you if you would like and have someone on that come and meet with us if, if that would, but all of these have to be approved by the city engineer. And it's my understanding that the homeowners association must have a clause in there that outlines the responsibilities of each homeowner to prevent any problems that might exist or come about.
Anyone else? Mr. Wilkinson, excuse me.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for explaining that, too, about the, how the one or all would be handled. One of the things I was looking at, your, the plan that was approved in 2007, had the driveways, at least three of them went, were longer and had a garage in the back. Is that a possibility in this location, or?
No, that isn't, at that particular time, if you would look at, we were anticipating selling prices of approximately $750,000 apiece. In order to do that, we had to have retaining walls and, and, and foundation walls surrounding all of the garage, extending back into the end of that garage, and then fill all of that, which was a substantial amount of fill as well. That, I mean, that, that is cost prohibitive in today's market.
Okay, thank you.
There was the question that had been raised about the turnaround areas. I think that's a part of the stipulation, but one of the things that we do want to have is ample area for not only turning around, but also the ability to park cars there when entertainment occurs.
Another question I have is with regards to the, you mentioned the, how shallow the sewers are that we're talking about on these lots. Are there concerns, and this might be a question that you need to answer, Rusty, and it might be a question that you can't answer, it might be an Eric Randall question, but are there concerns about capacity? Can the existing sewer system handle the added capacity? You know, again, going from three houses, we're adding, I mean, again, to be clear, we're not putting five houses where there are currently zero houses, we're adding two houses. Can the current system handle the addition of two homes? And, you know, there will be larger homes. I'm assuming there'll be a lot more toilets in these homes that are currently on these lots right now, for example.
But I'll actually be building, adding three sewer lines, because there are only two there now.
Yeah, with every rezoning application, the applicant has to go to Public Works to verify that there is adequate sewer capacity available for the development project as proposed. So they submit a letter. Scott Stokes has answered that with a letter saying that there are adequate capacities available for this project, and he has identified where they're located.
Hold on, Rusty. A question, and you may have mentioned this when you were reading through the stipulations a while ago, is there a requirement for a minimum setback other than the, the typical minimum setback to allow for parking? I mean, on townhomes and so forth, or in cluster developments, we'll have that minimum twenty-some-odd feet, and, and I just didn't catch what the setback was in general.
Oh, you mean, as far as the driveway to make sure that?
Yes.
Car doesn't overhang the sidewalk?
Yes.
It's in this zoning condition.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure it was in there.
Yeah, it's number thirteen.
Mr. Phil, we got some?
Mr. Pritchard, did I understand correctly that you said the square footage of these lots are bigger than the adjacent properties on either side of it?
No, I'm sorry, if I, across the street and behind us.
That's either side.
And, right, and if you look at the property west of this, there's actually a tremendous amount of floodplain on three of the lots, better than fifty percent on one of them, sixty percent on the other, and I think fifteen percent on the, on the third.
And then the fourth side is the development that exists that is?
Across the street is the cottages. The average square footage of those homes is seventy-nine, nineteen.
Right.
The average square footage of, I'm sorry, the lots, not the homes.
Right, right.
The average square footage of the lots in Parkview Village is seventy-nine, eighty-four. And Grand Manor, which is, not Grand Manor. Now, I might also add that Parkview Village, the cottages at Parkview Village and Parkview Village, some of the homes there have streets that are part of the lot. I think there are twelve of them in Parkview Village and six of, eight of them in the cottages, approximately eight.
Okay, so the square footage of these lots are bigger than those adjoining ones?
Much larger. I think our average square foot is approximately eleven thousand square feet per lot.
Any other questions, Mr. Pritchard?
I have a question for Rusty. The, I know, like, some of the impervious surface requirements are thirty-five percent of some lots, when these are, these parking pads are added with the turnaround area, will they still meet that? Is it twenty-five or thirty-five percent?
For RAD zoning, it's forty-five percent. So when they come in to apply for a building permit, that'll be part of our review. They'll submit a house location plan that'll show their house situated on the lot with the setbacks and show their driveway and, and house footprint. And they'll provide us the square footage of the total lot and then the square footage of all impervious surface area on the lot. If that's under forty-five percent, then we'll issue the permit.
Okay, so if that's forty-five percent for the entire lot, maximum impervious surface, is there a requirement for the front yard? I know that.
Yes, that's twenty-five percent from the front setback to the, the front lot line.
And that would apply for RAD as well, the twenty-five percent?
I'd have to go back and look at the code and verify that, but I'm, I'm not sure right now.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, Mr. Pritchard? Okay, thank you, Frank. Have a seat. I guess we're here from the opposition, those individuals that were sworn in. If you all would like to come forward and just state your case and tell us who you are and where you live at, and don't be bashful. We'll break the ice.
My name is David Stewart. I live at ten seventy-nine Bank Street. Respected city council members and Mr. Mayor, thank you for hearing me today. I wanted to speak out against these rezoning efforts, specifically the ones on Bank Street. First, I wanted to point out the main differences between this rezoning effort and a similar one from 2006, although they're characterized the same way, they, there are fundamental differences. So specifically, the rezoning includes ten-foot separation instead of fifteen, like it was last time. The rezoning includes fifty-foot wide lots instead of fifty-seven. This rezoning effort does not include any stormwater retention pond unlike the rezoning effort from 2006. So I'm, I'm sure after having those discussions, you're aware of this, but these are of serious concern to me. Second, I wanted to note the damage to my property that will occur with this much impervious square footage with an untested water retention system. I, I find that this is very concerning, this lack of retention, and believe that the potential for serious amounts of runoff into my property and into Parkview is the most problematic aspect of this rezoning effort. Third, I wanted to note that the pricing almost certainly damaged my property value. The property values of all the new construction on north, the north side of Bank Street as well. This is very simple, a very simple example. Eleven Hundred Bank Street has been on the market for about nine months for well above $500,000. It is the best that the cottages have to offer. The price has been reduced twice and still it persists on the market. The properties proposed might be targeted at a price point, but it's clear based on actual market conditions that the properties will not sell at these stated target prices. In fact, it is not the first time that this has happened. This, this builder has promised to make $500,000 houses in the past, and subsequently, $300,000 properties were constructed. In the cottages. So the remaining, the remaining ones that?
Not, those were all done.
They weren't. They were, they were subsequent builders. You're correct. Fair enough.
I'm just saying.
That's, that's fair. But in, in, to restate that exact same point, Pritchard isn't building these.
No, he's not.
Okay. There's nothing binding in these proposed plans about the value of future homes to be built on these lots. Nothing whatsoever. Fourth, overdensifying Bank Street reduces the value of all newer construction on this street. It caps the potential for additional high-value homes in one of the premier streets of Smyrna. In fact, once you allow this precedent, there are between nine and eleven properties where the same exact type of zoning could occur on Bank Street. I believe that this path will strain our infrastructure, cost the city money for upgrades, require expensive fixes to water problems after the developers are long gone. I also believe that it's just not the right path for that, for this, for this street. Fifth, the proposed fences and, and brick infrastructure of the proposed development will obstruct my view of the street as I try to back out of my driveway. It is dangerous already for my family and guests, as the cars that come down that hill over the speed limit are already difficult to see, and I'm backing up a hill. This is not a helpful situation, whether it's intended for beautification or to make it in compliance with what's going on with the cottages, that's not helpful either. In closing, I would ask the city council, listen closely to your constituents. I believe that this property can be effectively just zoning standards that have been in place before now. I respectfully ask that you vote against any changes in zoning at this time. Thank you.
We're doing girl, boy, girl, boy.
I know, right? Neighbor for neighbor. Hi, Mayor and Council, my name is Jules Wright. I'm a next-door neighbor to David there. And where we currently live at ten seventy-one Bank Street, we already experienced water runoff. We're at the corner of Guthrie and Bank. I actually brought, not the most beautiful pictures, but a couple of photos if I could give y'all something to look at here. And due to that, we went ahead and installed a minor drainage fix in there, which was a little under $3,000 to do. After getting that installed, you can look at the photos, it, there's, that's all the runoff that's coming from the front down, you know, that's an angled property, the house is set in, and it keeps on going down, slopes down into eventually the creek. So we ran off some of the drains into the creek there. If we build these homes with this unproven and kind of, you know, there's a lot of generalizations that are going on with the proposed building. There's certain facades or things that are acceptable, anything from hardy plank to stone to brick to, you know? to brick to, you know, stucco. There's unproven and new, you know, water, you know, containment systems and efforts to contain the water that are really unproven, and we're not sure. But I think the first thing to consider here is the beautification of our neighborhood and the way that it looks now. It's so pretty to go down the street, you have all the canopies and the trees, it really sets, you know, we have the square where we respectfully have community fairs and events, you know, the Memorial Day events, and there's some probably RA conditional homes right there as you go down. There are these two contained subdivisions, there are some more down, you know, as we're familiar with there, but extending that to these two other, you know, the five, and then another three across from us, that is taking down a whole lot of trees and changing the entire look and feel of the neighborhood from being like a really family-oriented, have a large yard, have your barbecue, your friends over, to really kind of packing it in and becoming a little bit more, to me, like the Highlands and Midtown area, where we saw on Highland Avenue it started, and it just keeps on building and building. You know, I think that the water issue is a really big concern. I don't understand how the fencing will look, or how that would feel, and, you know, right now, we have a very open and friendly, you know, neighborhood, and, you know, not saying that these people would be unfriendly, and a lot of us have Pritchard homes, so I feel like we're respectful to the Pritchards and how they've added to, I mean, we're in a Pritchard home ourselves, so we're all respectful to them, but now, at this point, it's really, it's up to us to decide whether it's even fair to consider RA conditional, to, you know, to change the zoning, and maybe we just keep the zoning as it is and, you know, rebuild the properties as they are.
I'll tell you one reason why, and I'm gonna, might be some devil's advocate here.
That's fine.
A couple of things. Number one, because I do live in Parkview, I live in a Pritchard home also. We have pretty tiny lots in Parkview, but there is definitely no lack of neighborhood togetherness, and barbecues and things like that. So I don't think that it's necessarily fair to say that the size of the lot is commensurate with the togetherness of a neighborhood.
I didn't mean to come off saying...
I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure, me too.
Yeah, the second thing is, I totally lost my train of thought, but, you know, there, you know, I know you have concerns about materials, things like that, but these are the materials that are in houses that have already been built, so I'm not quite sure why you're concerned about hardy plank and stucco and a mix of materials like that. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
I guess my, you know, overall, what will this neighborhood look like? There's a lot of just generalizations that, you know, and of what the neighborhood will look like. We're not sure if they're gonna have four or five driveways, we're not, you know, it sounds like they're gonna be really close to the road. It sounds like there is a proposed fence that would go up, and, you know, it just sounds like it would be really crowded, whereas now, the houses are set back, there are trees there. There's no mention of how many trees would even be left, once, you know...
And I remember what else I was gonna say, but you said, you mentioned the fairness of having these smaller lots, and one thing to point out is that this is completely in keeping with the future land use plan that a lot of people put a lot of thought into several years ago. And so I think that's important to keep in mind as we do continue this discussion, is that this is not something that is coming out of nowhere, it is within keeping, and again, the future land use plan isn't just for this block, it's not just for Bank Street, it's for, you know, it was put together for the entirety of the city, and it's something that, again, a lot of thought went into, and I think that that's something that we do have to remember when we have this conversation. This is not an arbitrary decision, it is in keeping with documents that, that were put together several years ago.
Sure, but since then, there have, you know, more people have moved in, and I think just in keeping with, you know, this is a very, this is an aging neighborhood. There's going to be a lot of properties, a lot more properties that come up for sale, and, you know, it's, this is the point, to decide even, you know, how dense will it become? And I think, you know, for me, obviously, I prefer the trees and, and having a less dense neighborhood. And would that be something that we would have considered when we purchased the home? Most likely. We had looked in town, we'd looked even farther out and said, hey, you know, we have trees, we have a little bit of a creek here, we've got some great neighbors, have a great garden, it's very pretty going down the street, and this looks like home for us. You know, I don't know, I could just see, is it gonna end up that it all becomes, you know, RA conditional, and we put four to five homes all the way down from, you know, my neighbor Millie, she's leaning against her mailbox as I was leaving, she's like 92-years-old, and from that down, is that to the park, will that all become those type of homes? What will it look like?
And I agree that that's an important question, and, I mean, I think I probably moved to this neighborhood for a lot of the same reasons that you did, you know, and, and there is a balance that has to be maintained. And the reason this neighborhood is attractive to you, like us, who've moved in recently, is because you do have, you're moving into an established community. You know, I'm in an infill neighborhood, but it's still part of a larger community. It's not like moving to, you know, a giant master-planned behemoth of a subdivision with, you know, 3,000 homes. And so there's merit to that. And my challenge, honestly, is how do we, how do we balance? Where do we find the balance between, again, working with the future land use plan, working with the plan that, you know, again, it's not intended to sit on a shelf, it's intended to be, to be utilized, and to be consulted, and to be, you know, to serve as a guide, balancing that with, again, what made this community attractive? And it is, it is a very tenuous balance, and it is a very difficult decision, it's something that we're talking, and again, if I seem like I'm pushing hard back, it's simply because I'm trying to look at this from every side. I mean, I had neighbors who said to me, well, my gosh, it's going to be so barren, and there won't be any landscaping, and I said, okay, a little perspective, when they built the neighborhood that we live in 10 years ago, it would hardly have been described as lush, but you have to have, again, you have to, so if it seems like I'm pushing back and I'm being difficult, it's really because I am trying to maintain that perspective and bring all the different views into this conversation that I've been hearing from different people with regards to this rezoning. And it is a very fine balance that we really have to maintain. That's what makes this part of Smyrna so attractive.
Can I ask you just a simple question?
Certainly.
This is your yard.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this something that happens routinely, or has, or did you, were you lucky enough to, for this to happen, when we had that, that day after day after day of rain?
That happens routinely, which is why we installed the drainage, and that is actually pictures after we'd installed the drainage.
Yeah, because, see, Highland Drive is, is in my ward, and I have seen the mess that it, the flood area that becomes if we get too much rain. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and, you know, I think for us, it's like, where you pull the drawbridge up? I mean, when we rezoned y'all's subdivisions, there was people that were here that were upset we were doing it. And so it is, it's like, you know, where do you, where do you stop? I mean, do you, you know, you try to be reasonable, and you try to be, keep everything in perspective, and yeah, I mean, we'd be foolish to tell you that they're gonna save trees, because they, you know, the requirements that they have to put in all this infrastructure, you can't save them. You know, you can say you're gonna save them, but they're not gonna make it, generally. But, but the deal is, is the overall plan is to replant healthy, healthy trees, and then you will have a nice, healthy, bushy tree neighborhood. But your comments are appreciated, and I would just, my only thing that I'd like to ask about your drainage is that, is that water coming off of your property, is it coming off somebody else's property?
It comes from like the top of the, the street, you know, like if, if this is the Bank Street here, and this is our property going down this way.
Okay.
It just comes right on down, because it's a hill that goes down this way, and then it also angles in towards the house.
All right, well, thank you very...
Thank you, and I do appreciate your time and your comments, and I understand that this is a debate that has everyone, you know, actively thinking, and I think, you know, just in a closing comment, that those neighborhoods that are already there are really beautiful, like where you live and the cottages, they look great, and it's just, you know, how far to extend that, and would it extend down all of Bank eventually?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
It's time for a gathering, get up now.
Good evening. My name is Sean Lewoski. I live at 1108 Bank Street. My house is actually right across from where the rezoning will take place. I wanted to say, I moved to Smyrna in 2004. I used to live over off of Reed Street and near Love Street in a little white house, and there was a lot right across the street that went through the same thing. I think Pritchard wanted to rezone it into two lots. I came and spoke at that point, and what happened was it was declined, and a beautiful single-family house went in that lot, right behind the funeral home. So, down Bank Street, if you look at it, my biggest opposition to this is just the, the overall, it would be, development would be inconsistent with what is at Bank Street today. I know we all talked about cottages at Parkview and Parkview, but those are basically neighborhoods with HOA. I believe these are houses that will not have an HOA. There's gonna be, they will have an HOA? Okay. So they'll have an HOA. The other thing is, the elevation, I've noticed, is that most of the front of the elevation, looking at the street, will be a garage, which I'm concerned about, because if you go down Bank Street, they're single-family homes, most of the garages are in the back. I know in our front of our house, our garages are all in the back, so I'm concerned about how the look and appeal of Bank Street, and like all my other neighbors, you know, this beautiful Bank Street, we've got trees up and down there, we walk up and down the street all the time, you're gonna have one clump of houses. And I, I just don't realize why it will take five houses. Why, why can't they go four houses? Why can't they go three houses? That land in Smyrna, there's a lot of things happening in the town, so that land will be valuable. I just don't think that this plan is the right plan for our, our Bank Street and our neighborhood. And you can tell, because we have a lot of neighbors here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chud Walford. I live on 1127 Bank Street, right next to the vacant lot, where these five houses...
It's the Miller house, that was the Millers?
No, it's a brand-new home. I'm the first one.
That's the Miller house? Yeah.
Nobody else lived it, it was called something else.
That's where the Millers lived.
Okay.
Yeah, I promise you.
Where the old Miller house was, I guess.
Yeah, the old Miller.
Okay. Mr. Pritchard built the house, so I couldn't tell you, it was already built when I bought it.
Yeah.
I can tell you that there's a lot of concerns with the runoff, and a lot of the development that he talked about that would cost additional funds was done on my house, though I paid a lot more for my house. And of course, the conversation around everything that he's talking about, a lot of his houses were built, with the exceptions that he's talking about, were built in subdivisions, not on the main street of Smyrna. So I think there's a big difference there. And I'll tell you, I have a big, wide, two-car garage and a lot of room to park, and when I have two or three cars over, there's not any room to park. And these are gonna be a lot smaller, and there's not gonna be a lot of room for anybody to park, especially with the small driveways that they'll have with just one garage door in front of them. So I oppose, and if there's anything you guys have any questions about, I can tell you that there will people, I moved into that house based on a lot higher price point, and if you would look to see whether it would be a four houses or three, I'm sure there's people that would be willing to pay a higher price point on that lot, and I think it's all about just what he's trying to return out of the investment.
Thank you very much.
And I'll just point out, we've heard, now we're hearing two different arguments, because people are saying that this street can't support the higher price points.
I paid it.
Well, I know, and I, believe me, I live in Parkview, I bought in '04, and I'm lucky that I didn't buy like some of my neighbors who did in '05 and '06. I understand completely, I am right there with you. But we had someone say earlier that, you know, there's a house that's been for sale for over $500,000, the price has been reduced and reduced and reduced, so...
Drainage issues.
Well, and that's what I, I'm thinking to myself, there's gotta be more to it than just...
It's right on the creek, and it has no backyard, and it has drainage.
Right, exactly, again, like, yeah, and I agree, there are a lot of other factors that go into why houses stay on the market for a long time besides just the price. But, so, but again, we're hearing, I mean, I don't disagree that this street could potentially support higher price points, I just don't know if we're there yet. I mean, again, I mean, like in Parkview, we're just coming back up to where we were in, in '04, we're not back to nearly what it was in '05 and '06.
Well, I can tell you, I work at the Home Depot corporate office. There's 15,000 people in that building, 10 people I know personally are looking for a house in that price range and would love to live two miles from the office.
But you know what, I mean, we were, we were letting the good times roll, baby. We had eight, nine-hundred thousand dollar subdivisions, and then boom, one day it stopped.
I don't think that's what you need, though. I mean, that is not exactly what he's looking for either. The three lots, I often buy it.
The economy drives, and we were at, and we don't zone by price of the house. We, you don't come in and say, hey, listen, I got, I got a million-dollar homes, I own 20 here. We don't, we don't do that. It's, cost of the house is nice to know, but I don't think by law we can do that.
And I totally agree, I think the conversation goes more along, along the aesthetics of having a nice yard, and a nice front yard, and a place to park, and looking at a home, and that's the reason I purchased the home, and I don't think there would be any problems with people purchasing at a little bit higher price point, and he wouldn't have near as many investments he'd have to do with cisterns and common areas and things he'd have to worry about if he had a larger house and a larger lot.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that was sworn in that would like to make any comment? Let's let this lady speak, and then you, you go next.
My name is Marla Yeager, I live at 1100 Bank Street. I own the house that is, hasn't sold, and I must say, I haven't been very aggressively promoting the sale of the house, but I am always told that I need to lower the price. And so with that aside, I think from listening to everybody's comments, what I would add is I feel very bad for the people that live at the bottom of the hill. The hill has a lot of water wash, it washes through my yard, which I have to manage, and I'm doing more of that soon, but that hill is pretty steep, and the water run is pretty bad, in some really bad rains. It was just a gusher coming down the street. So I don't think this will help with the property owners managing water below that area. I think it's, I think it's, we need to consider their situation, because there's no way to fix that hill and that water runoff.
The hill's been there for a long time.
That's right, the hill's not going anywhere. So it's, and it is a dangerous hill, because you, it is hard to see, and people do speed. So we would have, I mean, you would need to do something about the speeding. So that's...
Thank you, thank you so much. Another, the guy with the flat top, man, I used to have one of those. Yeah, I just got a top. No, I got a flat.
Just a flat?
Yeah.
I'm Travis Reinhardt, I live in the cottages, I live at 1105 Parkview Court. I'm not gonna bore you with everything they've already said. The only thing I would like to add is that I am a state employee, and I'm also a business owner. And one of the caveats to me living here in Smyrna where I do is I need the close proximity to the city. And I wanted to have the convenience of being as close to the city as I could be, but still have a sense of community, and have a beautiful area to drive through. There are many places within the city of Atlanta, I work there, I'm a, I'm a state trooper, and I work in the city and have for many, many years, and it goes from really nice to very bad in the blink of an eye, and they just keep putting pocket community after pocket community. And one of the problems that you face is, is that you might have a really nice community, but you gotta drive through three different, very bad communities to get to it. And I don't, I don't know about you guys, but for me, I'm, I'm prideful of where I live, and I've worked very hard to get where I am off Bank Street. And the last thing I want to do is have to drive, tell people to drive through particular areas of less, less beautiful areas, we'll just call it. The reason I'm saying that is, I like the old feel, the old look. I like the larger lots. I wish I could have had a larger lot, but state employee money doesn't allow that. But I like driving through there, it's beautiful. I have a two-year-old son, and my wife and I walk my son almost daily up to Market Village. We eat up there a lot, and there are a lot of different things that we really like about where we live, and having that live-walk type of community is pretty much unheard of, where you're not gonna get clubbed over the head with a brick, have a gun stuck in your face, and everything taken out of your stroller. So the correlation of what I'm referencing with what he's trying to do is, I think less homes would be a little bit better. I feel like keeping the street consistent with what it already is, is what's going to maintain the beautiful community that we have. Again, not saying that smaller homes is gonna bring bad people into our community, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, all of these homeowners that have large lots, that are highly sought after, that I wish I could have had, I would like to see more of it. I think it would continue to keep the beautiful trend of Bank Street, bring better families into the community, and you could potentially get the, the price ranges they're looking for on the property values. At the end of the day, the house is only worth what somebody's willing to pay for it anyway. But if you can put a nice home in an area where you can have a single family with two or three kids, and have more than two people in your backyard without rubbing elbows and shoulders, it'd be a tremendous advantage.
Do you know, we used to, I've... Do you know, we used to, I've been here so long that you would ask folks where downtown Smyrna was, and they'd give you three or four different places. They wouldn't give you the real downtown. This was in the 60s and 70s and, and really the 80s. And, but we know that we've built a nice little community, and we sort of gave it a new heart and, and everything. And, you know, this is, this is really sort of a unique problem that a lot of communities don't have. Some communities, you can't get anybody to build anything anywhere. And, and I'm going to tell you, Frank Pritchard is a good builder. I don't care, he's, he's a good man. And he got hit as hard as any builder I've ever seen get hit, and when the recession stopped. But I, I also understand what you're saying, what y'all are saying too. I know every single piece of property on Bank Street, because I lived there for, let's see, when did I get out of high school? 29, 28, 29? No, I mean, I, nah.
29?
No, no, I'm going to tell you, that hill has been there forever. I used to get on my English bicycle, see how fast I could go down that hill. But, yeah, it's all right. You can't, you can't offend me. But it is, I mean, it's a, it's a sort of a good problem to have, and it lets us hear from the folks that live in that area. But I want to just say this one more time, is that when, when your house was being developed, there was probably twice as many people here opposing. So it's just, I mean, and, and it's all good. I mean, it's all good. So all my time's up. But thank you very much for your time.
I may iterate just two quick things. I, I don't know if there's a time limit on-
No, I took some of your time, you can have it back.
Outstanding. Just to iterate the fact that where I live is a self-contained community. We have the detention pond, different things, all the other things that are affecting some of the other neighbors, those are things that we have. We don't have issues with people parking on the street, which, again, is very difficult when you're pushing a stroller up the sidewalk. I routinely have to enter the roadway, which is a safety issue. Again, I know that's not the issue at hand, but what is the issue at hand is those homes being right on the street without anywhere to put their vehicles or their cars is going to be a tremendous change in the landscape of the street and the community. And again, I would like to reiterate the fact that I just like the feel. That's what brought me here. I could have gone a little bit closer to the city, but it would have been a lot somewhere where, you know, no telling who my neighbors would have been. It wouldn't have been a walk to go eat. It's always going to be getting a car to drive somewhere. And I just really want to keep the feel that we have. I think it's a tremendous advantage in attracting more people to the community.
Thank you very much. Give me a chance just a second, Brian. Those have not spoken.
Troy Sather resides at 1159 Bank Street.
Eleven, what?
Excuse me?
What was the address?
1159 Bank Street.
I'd like to reminisce who's, who lived there. I think the Bivvins lived there.
And, and also on the adjacent property, 1171 Bank Street.
The Coons lived there.
All right.
I've gone deaf.
So I don't want to reiterate everything that's already been said. The main point I just want to make is, I think, the thing that concerns me the most, I guess, is the precedence that might be set going forward. You know, where are we going to be, and what is the look and feel of Bank Street? And if we do this, is it just going to continue going down that path over the next few years? And I think it'd be in contrary to, I feel, what other, you know, other developers, what other residents are trying to do as far as to maintain that look and feel. And there's a lot of other development out there where individuals are taking maybe a single home and building a single home and maintaining that single home, or potentially not doing a tear-down, but doing a remodel, and again, keeping us with a one, single home to single home. And something that's, you know, kind of close to home for me as well, is that, you know, we've taken that area right there at 1159, 1171, that initially was going to be probably something very similar, very three homes, zero lot lines, but that's not what we wanted there. That's not where we wanted to be, that's not where we want our community to be. And we've since taken steps to make it where that is not going to be in that situation. So it'll be a little lot less, less dense where we want to be and also where our neighbors want to be. So that's my biggest concern, is just kind of where are we going to go? And what's it going to be five years from now? What is it going to be 10 years from now? Are we going to be that kind of density all the way down Bank Street? And, and that might be a case where then you rethink, should I just make, you know, our area as dense? And then maybe potentially look and see is there, you know, elsewhere that maybe has bigger lots that might be someplace you might want to, you know, move and, and live in the future? So I would just urge the, the council to, you know, reject the zoning request, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Troy Sather.
Troy. Did I understand you say you bought the lot next door so that there wouldn't be another home there for you?
Yes. When we, when we moved in, our understanding was the lot line was literally right next to the driveway, and that our understanding was that there is, could be building, I forget how many feet, but very, very close to that line, basically could be a wall of a house. That's not exactly what we wanted, so we, we did pursue. We bought that lot, and we, of course, since, if you're familiar with that area, we've-
I did a similar thing in previous jurisdiction.
So at least now, if there's another home over there, it's a good, good distance away from us.
Do you plan on keeping that lot undeveloped, or?
Not sure yet.
It'll be up here in a couple of years for a reason.
Kind of, yeah. Maybe the right time. You know, got to wait for the market, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And I do want to comment, you know, I want to, you know, talk about the density because, you know, I, I don't want there to be any massive incongruence, but we have to remember a few months ago, we did two separate rezonings on Hanby Street, which is, you know, just a few houses away from here, where we are putting six houses in, you know, that are, that are fairly dense. And again, it's also in keeping with this future land use plan, but talking about precedent, I think that's already happened. I mean, I, I, and again, this is something I'm really struggling with because I truly do appreciate, I mean, what you said, sir, about why you moved here, that's the exact same thing I say about why I moved here. I mean, my husband works downtown. We didn't want a long commute. You know, we, I, we've lived, we've lived in Decatur and in Virginia Highlands and in these, you know, communities that really tout themselves as being the paragons of walkability and community-mindedness. And I wanted to live somewhere where I could put my baby in a stroller and safely walk to a library and walk to amenities and walk to, walk to restaurants, walk to parks. And we have that in Smyrna. And I, I really believe that we are one of the few areas in the metro, in metro Atlanta, particularly when you're talking about inner-ring suburbs, where you can say that. I mean, we, we really do offer that. And that is, again, what makes us so attractive. The look of these neighborhoods is what makes this such an attractive place to live. And so I, I absolutely appreciate what you're saying because that's the same reason I live here. I'm not going to do something that I think will devalue my own property. That, that's, you know, that's, would be ridiculous. So I think that, you know, please know that I absolutely appreciate what so many of you are saying tonight as we struggle through this.
Let's, let's this lady come, and then you speak right at her. Because she hasn't spoken yet unless she went and changed.
Hi, my name is Sybil Sather. I live at 1159 Bank Street as well, with my husband. Troy spoke ahead.
Say, there's another guy that lives there.
I know. I just wanted to say that Bank Street is Bank Street. It, it, there's a feel, there's a vibe, there's camaraderie, the neighborhood of its own, even though we are not a subdivision. We have our own, the street itself just has its, its own feel, its own community, just like any other street in the city of Smyrna. But the difference is this is Bank Street. My concern is if we were to go into the cottages or Parkview or one of the other subdivisions, and let's say we were to have the opportunity to purchase one lot or two lots, and then demolish that house and put two on one lot, or a McMansion on two lots, it would change the feel of your subdivision or your neighborhood. Bank Street is our neighborhood. We're not a proper subdivision. But when you come in and start changing the look and the feel of what is already on the street and what's present there, then you really change the dynamic of the street on a whole. And that's our concern. As you can see by all the neighbors that have shown up this evening, I know in the house that we live in currently, we were not, the, the things that were decided to build the house that we live in, we did not build the house, but we purchased it. We recognize that to have three large stone houses side by side by side was not desirable when you look at your kitchen window washing dishes to look at a brick wall next to you. And we decided to make it less dense, and we had that opportunity to take that. But if, if someone were to come in and change the look and the feel of the subdivision you were in by doing changes like this, drastic changes compared to what else is there, I think there's a, a different viable solution that could be met and could be found as opposed to putting high-density, you know, short driveways and really changing the dynamics of our street. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
I was just, Judd Walford, 1127 Bank Street. I was just going to say one thing. There's, the, the comments you made about the house, and I would not have purchased my house if those five houses were next door. So that is a big piece for me, that I wouldn't have moved to that subdivision and I don't, or that street if those houses would have been next door to me.
Well, that's it, Ms.?
Go ahead.
No, 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 you go ahead and speak.
I was just going to say, and yet, one of the things that makes Forest Hills so delightful is the eclectic nature of all the various housing. You know, that's it.
And we agree, just like you said, four houses would have been much-
I'm Janet Bland. I live at 1130 Bank Street, and I totally agree with Forest Hills. What I've seen of their redevelopment is they take down house and put up house. It's a one-for-one. Judd's property is 19,000 square feet. He is to the east. I hope I get that right, or Joel will let me know about it. David's, without the garden, is 17,000 square feet. I understand you've got little pockets that are self-contained, like the cottages and the Market Village and what's going on at Hanby. I think what people are trying to say is to the east and the west, on the north side of Bank Street, you have nice lots. And that's what we were really hoping for, is four, not five. I have a question, though. Will there be an HOA for five houses? It's in the application?
I've, I've never understood why we require it sometimes, because if you've got four houses and an HOA, there's somebody's going to be president, vice president, secretary of trade.
And who's going to, and who's going to clean out the flow well?
And, and I'm referring to what the applicant said earlier this evening when he said that there, there would be outline in the HOA documentation that, with regards to, you know, maintaining the cisterns, things like that.
Well, and that's why I asked the question, because it shocked me. That's the first time I'd heard that there was going to be an HOA there. The other question I have is for engineering, and we may not be able to answer that here, but if the land doesn't perk, then is the flow well off? Can they not put them in?
That'd be a question for the city engineer, but, I mean-
You didn't have to get up and say that.
I mean, the, the issue is, the system proposed is not the only system that's available. There's different ways of handling stormwater management. We're discussing one way that somebody's proposed to handle the, the water at this point.
Well, and when he did the zoning in 2002, what he had proposed was that the water be run into the detention pond in Parkview Village. He thought that was what they could hap, could possibly happen. I grew up in rural North Carolina. Getting septic tanks to perk was a big deal. I've done some research and looked at these. They are relatively new. I don't know companies you can hire to come clean them out like you can septic tank companies. And it is a concern that they're going to end up with these plastic buckets, is basically what they are, in the backyard that are going to be full of trash and debris, and poor Jules is going to be sitting downhill and more of the water's going to be running down. We went down by her house at the last rain, and Guthrie and Bank was totally underwater. There is a storm drain there, but it's not handling the water runoff at all.
Today, I think, for me, those are my biggest concerns, is, is the runoff of water to, from a new development onto an existing development. And, and I don't care so much about having a gazebo for HOA.
No.
I want to make sure that the property is properly set up to where it can take-
Right.
-the water into our existing system, which is very old. I mean, all of our, you know, these systems were set up 50, 60 years ago. I mean, are, are they still, can they handle any more water? You know, so. I know that if Eric Randall was here, I think he's going to have to start coming to this thing, because everybody's sort of throwing the sling of the monkey to, you know, here.
Yeah.
And the deal is, is that Eric will not sign off on anything unless it's properly done, engineering-wise. It's got to have his signature. And sometimes you just end up just, you know, you have to depend on, and, you know, sometimes we require 120% of the property, you know, for the runoff. But even now, I mean, I'm more concerned now with, with our existing system that we have now. You're right, Bank Street, that hill's been there forever.
Right.
And all that water's always draining to a certain point. Goes down Bank Street, up underneath South Cobb Drive, and-
It does. The last comment I'll make is I am not a fan of putting that fence across in front of these five houses. I think for the north side of the street, there's no other fencing that goes across the front yard. I just think that's going to make these five houses stand out like a sore thumb. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that Frank Pritchard had his hand up about six times when people were commenting. Maybe he can answer some of the questions that... Frank, these people are pretty civil. I've seen, I've seen worse crowds. I think these folks have been pretty good.
Yes, they have. And in fact, I've met with most of them. Let's first of all address fencing, since it was the last thing, and at my age, I have to have a little time before I can remember the thing before that. The fencing was as a result, it was added as a result of a meeting that I had with the members of Parkview Village, the cottages at Parkview Village, in which they requested that. For that, I thought, up until about 4:30 this afternoon, that I had their, their support. But it's, it is not something that has occurred. I actually wrote letters to them expressing that. So the fencing can be removed, and I have no problem, but it was a concession to the members of the cottages at Parkview Village. I would just as soon have it removed. The next thing is that we never anticipated having water drain into the retention pond of Parkview Village. We actually had bio-retention systems set up. And bio-retention system is a little more obtrusive to the landscaping than the, the flow well system. It will work, and if the flow well systems do not work, that would be the backup plan. That is the way that it was originally approved by y'all in 2006. There were some pictures that were given to you, I think. Do you have those? Yes. I might add that the young lady who spoke about the, the drainage lives in a, remember I mentioned that on five, there were five lots in Parkview Village Phase Two? Three, four of those are heavily affected by floodplain. And what she is expressing, I think, is the floodplain actually encroaches to about 20 feet, no, about 10 feet from her porch. This, these were built at that particular time when that was approved. To the west, east of her is a 50-foot lot that has been purchased. So that, I can keep them straight, the one that she lives in is Dallas's house. The lot to the right of her was purchased by my sister Barbara, and then my brother, my son bought Lot Five and lived in it. My nephew lived in Lot Two, which is the same as Travis's home. Si, he lived on Two, on Guthrie Street. And then my niece lives in the blue house, lived in the blue house to the west of the home. The blue house will be torn down. I was building my home to the east of this. This is the home now that Judd lives in. So we were, we were planning on having a Pritchard compound there and felt very comfortable having the homes that we were going to be building on those other five lots, felt very comfortable with that density. That's why I was gonna be locating my home there. So, the materials, the materials have been, are basically similar to all of the homes in Parkview Village, and all of them will be blended so that the look of the five homes blends. It blends well with streetscape, with up and back, but you cannot see that in the plan that's been shown here. What we were trying to do was to create elements there. Now, the home across the street that is for sale for $500,000, I think it's 2,700 to 2,800 square feet without a basement. And the homes that we'll be building are approximately 3,083 square feet with a full I believe that's got any other questions?
Again, we spoke a few minutes ago about the drainage system, the flow well system. Have you put in a system like this anywhere else?
I have, flow wells came into existence, I think, in 2005, okay? And I haven't built a home since 2006, so I haven't had it.
I'll sit here and run some calculations while you go. It looks like what you've got is basically four tanks, 180, 190 gallons each, sitting on 12 inches of gravel, or about 750 gallons of storage. But each one of them has an overflow in a, to, in case. I mean, and that's a decent storage for a single-family residence, but, you know, during some of these heavy rains that we've had lately, I'm concerned too about what's gonna go downstream. And something's going downstream. I mean, I, I don't have gutters on my house, but this, during this past heavy rain, I saw water coming over gutters.
Sure.
And I think we're gonna be, we're gonna be faced with that from time to time, and the water's gonna go to your southeast is the direction it's going to flow. And, you know, there's gonna be some problems downstream, I'm afraid. One of the concerns I got, I do feel like that the system will hold water to a certain extent, but at some point, it'll fill about 750 gallons up, and it's gonna flow out the overflow, and it's going downstream at that point.
Is this a requirement that the city's making you do?
What's that? The flow well system?
Yeah.
Well, we have to handle the water on any home.
Is it that or detention?
Okay.
Detention ponds.
Now, we can always add a, either a single or a bio-retention area in addition. So, the calculations can be made, and we can make sure that they, we meet those calculations. Are you looking for a safety factor?
I'm looking to hold the water. I, I mean, the biggest complaint I get from, not, probably not the biggest, but one of the largest complaints I get as a councilman is from people with water coming across their property. And oftentimes, there's, there's no simple solution. I mean, it's, water coming across your property is a very expensive problem for the city, and it's on private property, and we can't go out there and repair it. So, it's, it's a problem that, that oftentimes, we don't have a solution for.
Right.
So, it's a problem.
Yeah, and to that end, I mean, Jules, I hear ya. I spent several thousand dollars putting French drains in my backyard. It's not how I wanted to spend several thousand dollars. It's, it sucks. It's just not pleasant.
I have a question. When you were talking about the HOA would be responsible for making sure that the, those cisterns are maintained, so I was a little concerned when we heard that there wasn't a HOA.
I didn't mean that, that, I think that the requirements in the homeowners' association will re, will clearly define each individual property owner's responsibilities. This was brought up, I think, at the meeting that we had last week. Who is going to maintain that? And I think that that is simply a stipulation of the homeowners' association, or clause in the homeowners' association that clearly defines that, so that it does not become an issue. That make sense?
Yes, but I'm still kinda confused, because I don't think it, there's not a requirement to establish an HOA in our...
We don't have a problem establishing a HOA for those.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And then I had a question for Rusty as well, about the, are you, I can wait and ask him if you wanted to say something else. Sorry.
I was going to say, directly, the person who indicated they had water problems directly to their east is a 55-foot lot. It has been purchased by the people on the other side, but there's actually a lot there that can be built on at some time in the future.
Mr. Pritchard, while you're there, if you don't mind, I wanted to follow up. The HOA is an option, or is it something that you're going to include in the package? I know it's not a stipulated requirement from the city.
Right. We'll, we'll have some form of a homeowners' association to make sure that there's uniformity, paint colors, improvements, things of that nature, have to be bounced off of somebody. I do not anticipate a homeowners' association that would have a president, a board, and monthly meetings. That's not...
I've been there, done that, and it's, it's nothing pretty about it. My post prior to coming here was to be the president of my HOA, and 955 homes in a part of Smyrna that, much like all of you, didn't exist 20 years ago, and all of us are here, me included, because these homes were built, and there was opposition to both our developments. So, I understand that. But the purpose that our HOA brought to the equation for management of the water and the retention ponds, there's a state law, and there's enforcement at the local level, and we have to maintain these retention or detention facilities, and it's a cost of the HOA, so that collectively, we all own it. So, I assumed that's why the HOA was being engaged in this situation, in addition to the quality control. So, I just wanted to verify that that was the intent.
But your HOA has 1,000 homes. Your HOA has 1,000 homes.
To be specific, 955, but yes.
All right, I missed it. Five, 955. Okay, you have a question, Susan? We need to...
Yes.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. My question is about the impervious surface in the front yard and the zoning you had set up a little bit ago, that was 20, a maximum of 25%. And I guess I have concerns about when they add the parking and the turnaround area of these homes, if that will be able to be maintained, so...
They'll have to show that at time of permitting, but that's 25% from the minimum setback, which is 30 feet. So, essentially, the first 30 feet of the lot, they're gonna have to have less than 25% of the lot coverage for impervious surface area. So, they can move the house back and have the turnaround after that 30 feet. I mean, there's, there's 1,000 different ways to accomplish it. You know, we can't get hung up on just what is reflected on the plan. There's different ways to accomplish the requirement.
Okay, thank you. I just know that contributes to the runoff that we were talking about.
And real quick, I think we're getting confused between an inspection-maintenance agreement for the stormwater management facilities and what the HOA does, and there's getting crosstalk between the two. The inspection-maintenance agreement is something that the city is gonna require the developer to come up with, how to maintain these facilities, when those are regularly inspected and when they're maintained. That inspection, inspection-maintenance agreement for the stormwater facilities will be recorded with the county, and then that'll be, that'll also be recorded on the plat that they'll end up submitting to us to get approved.
Is that the individual that owns them?
Yeah.
Okay.
And on the, on the final plat as well, since these flow well systems will be underground, we're requiring that a easement go around this, so it's identified on the plat in the survey that, hey, you've got something underground, you need to maintain it, and here is your inspection-maintenance agreement that goes along with that, so...
Thank you, Rusty. Was there anybody else that was sworn in that has not spoken that would like to speak? Okay. Okay, just if you'll make it real quick, because this...
I just wanted to point out quickly that, in Mr. Pritchard's own words, when he was speaking of the Pritchard compound, and how comfortable they were with the density then, that was a density of all the homes that are larger homes with larger lots, not the, not the RAD conditional homes. That's it.
Okay. You, you wanna, say, I had to let you say something, now he's gonna say something. It's okay. It's okay.
It was. In fact, the home that I was building when everything collapsed was a part of that five-unit complex. The other thing I want to ask is if we could have a motion to remove the stipulation with the fence in the front, about the fence, if we could have someone entertain that.
All right. Okay. I'm asking the last, this is gonna be the last speaker, unless you, if I keep letting people come here back and forth all night long, then we'll be here all night long.
I understand. I apologize. I'm just, I'm, I'm having trouble understanding, because there are too many loose ends, and I feel like we, I haven't heard a definite one way or the other. So, the water containment system, it's not proven, we don't know, we don't know how it works, we don't know if it will work, but we're supposed to, or you're supposed to vote today in allowing them to go forward, but we're not sure if that's gonna be a possibility. I've heard that the footage between the homes will be 10, 15, 18 feet, but we're not sure about that either. The trees, they might stay, they might not stay. There just seems to be a lot of unknowns. The HOA that was new to me tonight, is there one? Is there not one? I just feel like there's, there've been no clear-cut answers in what the development will be, definitely. And I don't wanna be in your shoes to make a decision based on this, because I feel like there are just way too many variables and not enough concrete...
But this one is definitely out under the microscope to where you've really, every single thing, and normally, the professionals that we hire, the engineer, he's gotta make, before he signs off on it, he's gotta make sure that the, that the water runoff issue is whatever it is. You know, whether it's his system that we're talking about, or whether it's a detention pond. The same thing with the housing between the houses. That's left up to Ken Sudrich and his staff to make sure where the houses are placed.
And I understand that. But if, if you approve five homes with this water system, and let's say the water system doesn't work because the soil type is not correct, or whatever reason, then what do we do?
It would be like any other subdivision, that we approve here, and then it goes through the, through the system, and the engineers sign off on it. I mean, if it doesn't work...
I mean, if it's proven that they cannot place that system in, so in five homes, if they cannot put this cistern water containment system in, then what? We've already approved them for five homes.
Well, we certainly would not let them go in and develop it if they couldn't, if the system's not gonna work. They gotta have, they gotta have some type of system in there to, to keep the water from, you know, going downstream.
Correct. No, and I understand that. So, then would it be limited to four homes and a detention pond?
No.
Or what would, what would change to alleviate the water issue if that system doesn't work?
That, Ken, come help me out, because this is, I'm not an engineer, and we pay these guys hundreds of thousands of dollars a year.
I'm still waiting on that, by the way. Just for the audience's sake, because it's been referenced back to staff several times, building permits will not be issued if it is shown that something's not gonna work. All of the things that we have talked about have to be demonstrated to not only my staff at Community Development, but also to Public Works people and the City Engineers Office, excuse me, as well as the Fire Department. So, there are multiple departments and multiple signatures that have to be obtained before we'll issue a building permit. So, to answer this lady's question is, if something doesn't work, what are we gonna do? We have five lots. They have to come up with another system before we'll ever give them the building permit. If that means they've gotta go into some type of detention pond, that's fine, or if they gotta reduce the number of lots, they have to figure that out. The city won't figure that out for them, because we won't give them the building permit until they demonstrate to us it will work.
Thank you so much. Okay. Ms. Pritch, uh, no, I was gonna say Ms. Pritch, Ms. Nellowich.
Yeah. I'm, you know, this is clearly a conversation that is still evolving, and there are details that are worked out. I think there are a lot of issues of, of, you know, semantics, like saying something's untested, and well, and that doesn't necessarily, and that which, you know, obviously is different from saying that the city engineer is like, let's see if it works. That's, that's not what that means. That means that, you know, there are, it wouldn't, again, that wouldn't have been approved if the math and the numbers and everything else didn't add up, and the city engineer didn't think that it was going to work. And believe me, there are plenty of times when he thinks things are not going to work, and he says, this is not going to work, something, y'all need to come up with something else. Regardless, I think that this is, this is a conversation that is continuing and is ongoing, and I think there are some things that need to be hammered out a little bit more specifically, because there is not a comfort level here in this community tonight. I think that that's clear. So, I want to like to move to table this item, and at this time...
Second. I'm just saying, my Mr. Phil, table.
And at this time, that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna move to, and I'm gonna hit the motion, but I'm hitting the motion for what I'm saying right now, and that is I'm moving to table item 4B, which is item 2015-116, public hearing. This is zoning request Z15008, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of five single-family homes. It's 1.27 acres, landlot 488, and this is 1091, 1107, and 1121 Bank Street. The applicant is Pritchard Brothers Incorporated, and I think we'll be fine tabling this to the July 6th meeting, and that's, I'm gonna put that date there. I think that that should be fine. So, at this point, that is my motion.
July 6th?
2015.
And I second that, in order for the community to keep talking about options to...
All those in favor of tabling, please vote. 7-0, table July the 6th. Item C. This is a public hearing on zoning request Z15-010, rezoning for R15 to RAD conditional for development of two single-family homes. 0.53 acres, landlot 488, 1068 Bank Street, Frankie L. Pritchard. The background, please. And are we gonna table, well, go ahead with the background.
The applicant is proposing the demolition of the existing home and the development of two new detached, single-family residents. The density for the site will be 3.77 units per acre. No land use change from moderate-density residential will be required for this rezoning, and staff does recommend approval.
And the only reason why I'm saying that, is I don't wanna spend another hour and a half discussing something that we're gonna table, and then, you know...
I can put on my Karnak hat, but I, I think it's safe to go ahead and proceed with this one.
This is a public hearing. If anyone here is in opposition to, or they would like to make any public comment concerning this request for this rezoning at 1068 Bank Street. Okay? All those that would like to speak or make any comment concerning this rezoning, please step forward at this time. Do not be afraid, and I shouldn't, because I know y'all are pretty comfortable now talking. I'm just kidding. Hey, you're, hey, you're bigger standing up than y'all sitting down, you know that? Anybody that needs to be sworn in, let's get sworn in now. Even if you don't wanna speak, I just wanna swear everybody in all at one time. All right. This is then Mr. Terry Nellowich's ward.
Yes, Mr. Martin, please.
All right. We're moving 100 feet down to the west of the property that was, we were just talking about. Rezoning case Z15-010, it was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 11th. They recommended approval by vote of four to two. This property is 1068 Bank Street, is zoned R15. The applicant is proposing to demo the existing house and build two new, single-family homes on lots that are approximately 11,400 square feet in size. They're requesting a zoning to RAD conditional, which is site plan-specific, and as you can see, the lots across the street to the north and to the east and south are all zoned RAD. The adjoining lot to the west is R15. This property is also located in an area with a land use classification to moderate-density residential, which is under 4.5 units per acre. This request will not require a land use change. Here's the zoning proposal. As you can see, it's two, single-family homes with a shared driveway that come in between the home to, to detached garages that are located behind, behind the house. City's gonna request right-of-way dedication. There's your shared driveway. And then there is a stream buffer and impervious surface area setback. None of the structures or driveways are located within this stream buffers, impervious surface area setback, so there's no variance for that. Here are the proposed home elevations. Here's a picture of the subject property. And then, of course, the adjacent properties. And then, of course, the adjacent properties in the area. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of two, single-family homes at a density of 3.77 units per acre with the following conditions. Number one, the composition of the home in the residential subdivision shall include a mixture of elements, not including but limited to brick, or not limited to, but including bricks, stone, shake, hardy plank, and stucco. Number two, the stormwater management facility shall be placed and screened appropriately to be unobtrusive to homes inside and outside of development. Number three, all utilities within the development should be underground. Number four, the developer shall be responsible for any traffic improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. Number five, no debris shall be buried on any common lots, or on any lot or common area. Number six, the developer will comply with the city's current tree ordinance. Number seven, all landscape plans must be prepared, stamped, and signed by a Georgia-registered landscape architect. Number eight, all yards and common areas are to be sowed and landscaped. And number nine, provides a planning schedule for the trees on these new lots. Onto special conditions. Number 10, the development shall maintain the following minimum setbacks: front setback of 30 feet, a side setback of 5, and a rear setback of 30. Number 12, the right-of-way along Bank Street shall be increased to 50 feet, and a dedication of 5 feet will be required. Number 13, the developer shall provide a 5-foot sidewalk with 2-foot grass buffer along Bank Street. Number 14, the developer should provide, I'm sorry, that's a repeat. Number 15, the developer shall provide an access easement for the length of the shared driveway. Number 16, all trees within limits of disturbance and not located within a tree protection area must be removed during the land clearing and grading phase of the development. Number 17, approval of the rezoning of the subject property for the RAD zoning district shall be conditioned upon the development of the property in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan dated 5/7/2015, created by DGM Land Planning. 18, the applicant shall be bound to the elevation submitted with the rezoning application submitted and dated 4/9/2015. And number 19, the developer shall install a decorative wrought iron fence and brick columns along Bank Street similar to the existing fence of cottages at Parkview Village. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Did I understand you correctly that this is going to have a shared driveway?
Yes.
Where else in the city do we have property in this price range that shares a driveway?
In Williams Park, and most of the homes that have rear-entry garages.
Were they built in the last three years with shared driveways?
Medlin Park on Medlin Street has four homes that have two shared driveways that were built by David Weekley. There's examples around.
I mean, they know what they're getting when they buy the house, right? Shared driveway. Part of the deal, I guess. At least they know they got it before they buy it. Any other questions, Rusty?
Yeah, well, it's not really a question. I was just going to say that when you have a shared driveway, then nobody gets to park in the driveway. That's my comment.
It depends on, I mean, I know people with shared driveways on Powder Springs Street, and often, usually, they fork out. It's one coming from the street, then they fork out. There are plenty of situations in which it can work.
These millennials...
Unless you're Hatfield's and McCoy's.
Us baby boomers could never figure that out. This is a public hearing, we can, for those folks that, well, I guess you want to let Frank speak?
Yeah, I'd like to invite the applicant to come up and speak to this.
Frank, you've taken it pretty good for a couple hours. You look the same.
I do?
Yeah, kinda.
Kinda. Well, we're functioning in this in that we are not going to have the issue of the stormwater management, because this is in the rear, and it flows down after it leaves the flowwell system. Any overflow would flow into the creek. There's a creek behind it, so we can eliminate that. The issue of the common driveway, there are actually nine homes, you're asking nine? Nine homes in Parkview Village who have shared driveways. In one situation, there are three people who have a shared driveway. That would be lots 1, 2, and 3 on the right as you enter Parkview Village. Then lots 4 and 5 share driveways, lots 34 and 35 are 35 and 36 share driveways, and then two other homes, which I can't recall. So, it is something that's been done without issue. As far as the parking is concerned, when you and I talked last week, I indicated that the garages would be brought forward there, that this was for example purpose, and there was adequate room in the back to have a parking pad, and we talked about not having teenage kids would be a caveat. None of these folks will be able to have teenagers. But we're going to have extra concrete in that area for parking of vehicles off-street. There's actually a grass median that goes in between the two sidewalks, and we've done that tastefully in Parkview Village, if y'all need to see something like that. It's done very well. There's a condition in there that I want to clarify, that they are limited to the elevations that we have. Lot 2, I met with the person living to the right of Lot 2, to the east of Lot 2, and as a part of our agreement, we agreed that we would have him meet with our architect to develop the plan to make sure that proper screening and location and privacy existed between his home and this home. And so that is something, those, and I think it's written such that we can vary the elevations, but we have to submit, it has to be submitted to the Community Development for approval. I believe that's got it.
Any questions, Mr. Pritchard? Okay. For those folks that were sworn in that would like to make public comment, if you'll come forward, tell us who you are and where you live, and any comments you'd like to make.
Hello again. Troy Sather, 1159 Bank Street. Just, I'll spare you the same comments earlier, but just pretty much the same concerns I had earlier around just overall density. And the only other comment is I'm looking at a map of the cottages, and they share Parkview Court, but I don't see any shared driveways for the houses. It looks like they all have their own actual entrance and their garage, so this is a clarification.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that was sworn in?
David Stewart, 1079. I'm right across from this. Clearly, I'm not a fan of this sort of development. I don't believe that this is a wise way going forward, putting houses on 50-foot lots, putting shared driveways in the middle. Doing this anywhere on a main street in Smyrna is opening it up to doing it everywhere on every main street in Smyrna. I don't think it's a good idea at all. All the examples that we've talked about, to my knowledge so far, have been inside of neighborhoods where you don't have high volumes of traffic, where people know what they're getting into in the entire neighborhood where there is an HOA, that sort of thing. This is not, I would argue strongly that this is not the kind of smart development that Smyrna should pursue. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, Jules from 1071 Bank Street again. This is directly across the street. So, my first main concern is going to be the water issue. It sounds like there's a lot of paving going on, cement in the backyard, paving in the front, and enough drainage to contain these things, but where's the permeable soil when you're putting in cement and concrete and more driveways? And this is still situated on a hill that still goes this way and this way. We can't really change that. It's been there a long time, right, Mayor?
The hill's been there a long time.
Yeah, the hill's not going anywhere. So it's, what are we going to do with it? So that's one thing. I would wonder, where does this other water go? You know, if it's draining off the house into something that goes in the back, what about when it's pouring rain and it's just coming down all the cement and everything in the front? The second thing is, I actually had, they're not here tonight, but I met some lovely neighbors who've been in the neighborhood a long time, and way, way back, there was a thing where they'd done a canopy study about the trees, and some of the, when you're looking down Bank Street on that side, that has one of the highest canopies left on the street. So that would be basically tearing that down. And, you know, I know there's hawks that nest there, there are owls that nest there, and we all really appreciate and love the birds and seeing them and the nature that's there. We have a little homeostatic environment going on, and we still have fireflies. You don't see that when you move in towards the city. And how, you know, we've been building a lot of other things, and, you know, having these other contained neighborhoods, but I do believe that that takes away from the town feeling that you see when you go along Bank Street. So, being directly across the street from me, it would really change my view on a daily basis, and those are my main concerns. I have a lot of the other, you know, opposing viewpoints, as we stated earlier, kind of stand. So, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. This guy I've been waiting on all night long.
I was making sure everybody got everything out in front of me first. My name's Sol McCarver, and I also live at 1079 Bank Street, and thank you, Jules, for everything you followed up on. And she is serious when she says about those owls and hawks, she does love those things. I mean, every time, "I saw two more fly-eyes, great." Anyway, so, actually, my story at Smyrna starts 22 years ago. I moved up here, I was effectively a refugee from Miami. Had the hurricane move us up here. And so we grew up off a Ridge Road, played ball at Brinkley Park and Cow Park. So, I've driven through here for a long time. Remember when Atlanta Road was a single-lane road? And, you know, there's a lot of older homes, and naturally, they've been torn down, especially on Bank Street. This is, this is not just one, you know, another street for Smyrna. This is a street that leads to the City Hall. So, you know, whatever precedent we set here today will be carried throughout to the rest of the city. I think we've already established that. Two major points of contention I have, so it was two years, 17 days ago, is when I was reviewing the site plans and also all the documents for my first mortgage. So, before I signed my life away to the bank, looking and seeing these property lines and looking across the street, and nice, solid lots, great. This is really what I was looking for. Lived in midtown in the Highlands for seven years before moving here. And, you know, I think I voiced a lot of what other people just recently purchased homes, and at pretty high price points, and they probably would not have done that knowing that what is effectively about to change for the rest of the street. So, I would, you know, again, I voiced my opposition in regards to the zoning being restrictive, or going to RAD conditional. The second one is the proposal for the driveway. So, it's a shared driveway, and to your point earlier, I haven't seen it anywhere. And again, you're going to go ahead and establish it on Bank Street. The other thing that that does to the front elevations is, I think I last checked, it was 30-foot wide front elevations. That's not even a first down in football. I mean, that's 30 feet, that's practically nothing. So, if we're going to say that we can get a mid, half-million-dollar house with only a 30-foot elevation, I would challenge that. So, you know, concerns with the driveway plan, I just, I've not seen that anywhere, especially on Bank Street. When I purchased my home two years ago, it was based on the zoning, it was within my area, so I could almost see that as a contract I entered in with the city of Smyrna. So, again, I hope that you all make the right decision tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else that was sworn in? Okay.
I'm going to make a couple of points real quick, and one is that, again, the future land use plan isn't something that we came up with last week. This has been in existence for, I think, probably around 10 years. Is that right, Ken? For the...
The city's had a land use plan for a long time. Now, we've recently updated it, but the big update that we're talking about that affects this area actually occurred in 2008 and has been updated since. That's really the bones of it. But there was a previous land use plan.
Right. But this iteration that we're talking about tonight has been around since 2008. So that's not, it's not something that's being sprung on anybody or anything. I think that's an important point to make, because, again, we want all sides to be out on the table, all angles of this to be out on the table. The other thing, you know, I've talked a lot about finding that balance and crossing lines, and I think we have to be real careful to not cross the line between working together collaboratively as a community and dictating what people can and cannot do with the property that they own. That's within the nine zoning criteria that's set up for property. And I think that this, and the reason why, Mayor, I wanted to go ahead and go forward with this, is because I think that this is different from the previous item that we talked about, in that this is much smaller scale. And again, we need to be very careful, I think, as people who respect property rights and people who respect the ability of a governing body to make decisions, that also respect property rights, that we're not saying, "Okay, I don't like the looks of that. I know it meets these requirements, I know it's in keeping with what the plan is, but, you know, no, don't like it. It's not what I would build." Well, if I want to see what I want to build, I've got to buy the property and build it. And I think we just have to be very careful about not crossing the line, again, between seeing what is best for a community, seeing what impacts the overall feel of a community, and saying, "Well, I know that they can do stucco and hardy, but I want it to be stone, so I'm going to make sure they do stone." And that's a point that I think is important to make.
I'd like to make a point. A land use plan is only a plan. It is not written in stone. When you have this many people turn out on a street, then you've got a problem. It really and truly needs to go back, and whether it's two smaller houses, I wouldn't buy a house that size and share a driveway with somebody I'm just going to meet sometime this year. I think it's foolish. Now, if you want to share a driveway with your mother and father and everybody else in your family, that's your thing. But I just think this is a very poor precedent to set for a neighborhood that is a nice, a very nice neighborhood, and has managed to attract some very worthwhile citizens to this community. So, that's my two cents.
So, I'd like to say something as well, that I agree with Andrea, that the land use plan is a guide, and it's, I just asked our legal counsel here, and he said it's not a legal document like the zoning is, but it is a guide, so...
Yeah, I think I said before, it's not Hammurabi's Code. I may have said that upstairs, not downstairs, but it's also not something that, again, was sprung on anybody.
We're pretty much done with public comment, and let's just...
I just wanted to...
Maybe we're not.
Something to show that the, I'm sorry, that the neighbors that are here tonight, I think the majority of them have purchased homes on Bank Street beyond 2006, when you said that the land use had been altered to this one. So we all moved in this area as it is now, and that plan use guideline, you're altering what we've moved into.
What I'm saying is that the future land use plan has this as the RAD conditional.
I understand that, but we moved in as it, just that we're new to the area, and we chose this area for that reason, for the way it is now.
And listen, just, I don't want to be argumentative, but the first redevelopment that we did in the downtown was these houses right across the street, and they were, I don't know, it was 22 houses on a very small, the cottage kind of deal, and that's what got things going, really. So it was, that was a higher density than what we've seen anywhere in this area. But, and the same thing out front, I think John Whelan, he did, what, 18 townhomes out front? We should base our decision not on how many people are for or against it. We cannot do that. We should base it on the facts and the information that we have, and do what's in the best interest of the city. We have already been in court several years ago, because they turned down a zoning, and a couple of councilmembers says, "Yeah, I voted for it, because all those people were there against it." Guess what happened? That got overturned. So the decisions that we make should be based on all the information, and not because, we take an oath, without fear or favor, we act as what we believe is the best interest of the city. So, anyway, thank you very much. Okay. Anybody else want to say anything before Terry makes her motion? Or you can say it after she makes her motion. Or you can say it after she makes her motion. Okay, go ahead, or, go ahead, Terry, whatever you wanna do.
I'll take a moment to say a few words. We've dealt with a number of zoning matters in now just over three years of me being on council, and like most of you, I moved here since 2006. I bought into an established neighborhood that was still under construction. We didn't finish our last home until 2008, John Whelan Community. But that was not added to the city tax rolls until 20 years ago, when John Whelan bought some farmland, and there was opposition then to bringing many of those and subsequent properties on board. We're all here because it's a great quality of life in Smyrna, and the quality of the people that we have lured here, most of you in this room qualify, except Joe and Janet, maybe, but, but the fact of the matter, and I see a couple of other places, they've been around a long time, but we're a great community, we have a lot of terrific people, but, how many of you have ever been on Google Earth? There's no longer a secret. Every piece of real estate between Chattanooga and Atlanta is clearly identified and is developable and is targeted. We're an attractive community, people are coming here, they wanna be here, they wanna be like you and me and move here. They're looking for the little slices, slice of heaven. Trooper, I appreciate your service, and I appreciate that you wanna be in the middle of this community. And when I hear somebody move from midtown in Atlanta like I did, I understand. There are 50-foot wide lots in Atlanta, all. They're all 50-foot wide lots, 7,500 square feet, that's the city of Atlanta's standard. I moved from one of those. I bought some of those lots, I sold some of those lots, but I bought the lot on either side of my house so that I could do what one of you has done. And Judd, you probably don't know the history, Max was calling out your house because Max grew up on that street, as did my predecessor. His house stood right across the way and was taken down, his family's homestead. And for those of us who have arrived in Smyrna, it's difficult to realize that that stand of trees that we bought our house to be next to may not be there unless we do what one of you did and buy it up a lot less next door. It's coming. It's coming. And we, as policymakers, we're guided by a plan and by zoning stipulations, and we have nine criteria that we have to gauge. Fear or favor, as the mayor said, we have to make a decision based upon that. And I'm one of those people who believes in the uniqueness of this country. America is distinguished from every other country on the planet because we have personal property rights, because Mr. Pritchard bought land, and in fact, the land in question, both on this and the previous application, was family land for him, where he and his family were living and were to live. He chose to be in Smyrna like we did, and I cannot withhold the opportunity. I can put stipulations as a city official, and we can hold them to the high standard that we all want to. But the goal and what the performance of the last 25 years of the City of Smyrna have proven is that the high quality of life standard is adhered to, that the quality of construction is adhered to, and if you look at the tax rolls, property values have gone up as a result and have held fast, the little brief episode, Frank notwithstanding, that we all experienced. But I believe that we have obligations in these roles to find every way to make sure that we all can come together. You may not know the person who's gonna be in the home that may be built on the lot next door, but that will be a short-lived thing. We're a community, we have, we have new faces like you that are recent additions that we're glad to have in the community and that are contributors. For that reason, I'm gonna second Ms. Nullowitz's motion.
I haven't made it yet, but I appreciate that very much.
Mr. Welch, you wanna say something?
Thank you. Resting, could you pull up the zoning vicinity map for just a minute? I have a question, kind of in relation to this lot. I'm looking, and I think my map's upside down, but back to the east, with the houses located on Parkview Court that look like they're rear-entry houses, and what's the width of those lots, basically? I mean, they look very similar in width, and so do the two lots to the immediate east of this parcel. Is that a fair assumption?
I'm looking at my staff report, because I choose to...
That's not, I appreciate it.
Based on the tax plots, they range between 50 and 53 feet.
The lots there on Parkview Court and Parkview Pass? So we're looking at very similar lots, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm not a real fan of the shared driveway. But at the same time, I look, you know, 100 feet to the east, and we got, we got three lots that are on the road that are, that do the same thing, except without the shared driveway. But the houses sit on 50-foot lots, just like we're viewing here tonight, and it's hard to look at that and turn this down. So... That was my only question, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, I... Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Susan, did you want to...
Yes, I did wanna say something. I'm concerned about setting a precedence for the shared driveways and what that will present as far as overloading on the streets, as far as parking, so that's, you know, just concerned about that. Thank you.
I'm gonna say, the shared driveway, again, it's not something that, actually, Frank, did you wanna say something?
You need to come up here, Frank, you need to come up front, it's just, we've been on this three and a half hours.
Mayor and council prefers we can provide homes with front entries.
There'd be an additional driveway then, right?
Driveway.
Yeah. I actually am not concerned about a president with a shared driveway, because I can think of several houses off the top of my head that have shared driveways. Powder Springs Street is a street that I think a lot of people would agree is very similar in feel to Bank Street, and I know people who have shared driveways on Powder Springs Street, they actually get along pretty well, and it's not a problem. And, you know, and Frank, I don't have any more questions for you, but there is a question that I've heard a lot in the 10 years that I've lived in my home in this neighborhood, and I've heard it asked about some of the folks who are sitting here tonight, who now live in these houses, and it's people saying, well, what kind of person is gonna move into that house, anyway? And my answer is always, your neighbor is that kind of person who's going to move into that house. And we all have a choice to make about what kind of neighbor we are going to be, but I personally think that it's very unfair to say, you know, who's gonna live there? What kind of person's gonna live there? Because again, that's been said about, I know it's been said about me when they had these hearings about Parkview Village 10-plus years ago. I know it's been said about some of y'all who live in these houses on Bank Street. So we have to be careful about how far we go in terms of legislating who can live where and what people can and cannot do with their property. Again, this is something that I don't think we're setting any kind of negative or dangerous precedent, this is in keeping with what is, you know, 100 feet up the street. The reason I wanted to go ahead with this tonight, because I think it's in many ways a very different animal in terms of what the previous agenda item was. I think that is something that we're, the conversation absolutely needs to continue and evolve, because right now, I think that we're not in a place where anyone was comfortable proceeding with this, that's why we tabled it. This, I think, is different. I think that the conversation with regards to this item crossed over that point into being, I think, a little bit, as far as I'm concerned, a little bit too controlling over issues, too focused on issues that are of individual aesthetic preference and a preference of what someone else does with their property, and really wasn't in keeping with the spirit of what we have to do tonight, which is look at those nine criteria and determine, does this meet those criteria? And I feel comfortable that, yes, it does. At this point, I am gonna go ahead and move to approve item 4C, which is rezoning request 2015-167. It is public hearing for, again, zoning request Z15-010, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of two single-family homes, it's 0.53 acres, landlot 488. It's 1060 in Bank Street, the applicant is Frank Pritchard.
Second. Motion's second. No further discussion. Mr. Lenika.
Yes, sir, Your Honor, I just wanna participate in this discussion as well. First, I wanna thank all the citizens who took time tonight to be here and share their views. As Mr. Fennell said, we do live in a unique society, and the ability in a democracy to express yourself and confront your government and state your opinion, whether you think your government agrees with it or not, is a true blessing that's not enjoyed by billions of people in the world. And we should never forget to, you know, give thanks for the blessings that we have, you know, by living here in this country. I understood the issues with the first rezoning that was tabled, and I think Ms. Nullowitz made a right decision. We talked about that briefly upstairs. I think there's too much uncertainty, too much concern, too many unanswered questions. I'm very comfortable that we tabled that. Again, I think that was the right decision. In this case, you know, it is a little bit of a different animal, simply due to the lack of volume, if you will. I mean, we're talking about one lot being two houses, not 20 lots being 40 houses. With 40 houses, you know, and I'm just picking an arbitrary number, there's a lot more factors to consider in terms of how the lots are laid out, the neighborhood is laid out, how the properties are gonna be accessed, are you gonna have to build public streets? You know, there's many more factors to consider. In this case, we have a lot on a public street that's being proposed to be divided into a size very similar to, if not the same as, other lots in the immediate vicinity. And it is important that we, if we're gonna be fair and consistent, that, you know, good for the goose, good for the gander, if you do for one, we should do for everybody. Fairness is an American trait, I mean, I think it's something that we insist on. There is no royalty in America, we're all citizens, we're all the same. I'm also, you know, always interested in land use and development, and that's been a primary focus of mine during 27 and a half years of service on this council. I know in Ward 6, I've rezoned several dozen new neighborhoods, each one with its own challenges, each one with unique situations, and each one, in the end, producing a neighborhood with very proud residents who are happy to live here and participate in our quality of life. We get back to a central theme of development anywhere in the country, whether it's in academia, or in government, or in social circles where you're having discussions. How dense is too dense? And if you can't have density in a downtown, then where can you have it? That's one of those questions that we have to ponder. I don't think any of us, by the fact that we've chosen to live in Smyrna, wanna live in a totally urban, you know, a million people per square mile kind of environment with high-rise living structures and all the rest of it. But we've also chosen not to live on farms. And somewhere between Manhattan and New York City and rural Nebraska, where my family came from, there's a balance, and each community has to choose that balance itself. What's the right balance? Each community needs to make that decision. But if, if we don't have some density somewhere, then you end up with urban sprawl everywhere. We end up with no farms and no forests, no public green space, because everything is subdivisions or factories or commercial shops or whatever you want it to be. So at some point, as humans, we've chosen to cluster together in towns and villages and along the way into large cities. That human trait has been going on for thousands of years. So I think, as a society, we've accepted the idea that we wanna cluster together and have core areas of higher density than rural areas of very low density. Again, if we're gonna have food on our table, we need to have farms. If we wanna have oxygen to breathe, we need to have forests, along with the resources that those forests give us. I'm not afraid of three and a half units per acre in a downtown. I think that's frankly a very low number, but each situation has to be judged differently. And whether I like or dislike the proposed houses that are in the plans or the driveway configuration of what's shown in those plans, we're not zoning to that standard, we're not requiring the builder tonight to build a house with a shared driveway, or to build two houses with individual driveways, or to build them side by side instead of one up and one back, or, you know, any number of other possible variations, all kinds of style and design to landscaping and everything else. So there's a lot of flexibility in there, and ultimately, the free market gets to choose and decide the answers to a lot of those questions. Builders aren't gonna build houses that won't sell. We don't want empty vacant houses in our community that become crime problems and problems for neighborhoods. We all want good neighbors. How we work together and achieve all that is, you know, the rub of the whole matter. But I am gonna support this motion, because I think for, for this situation, one lot becoming two lots with a lot of flexibility for how that two lots is ended up built out is an appropriate answer for us, you know, in this particular area. So I support the motion.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, five to two with, let me see what it says here. Ms. Bluestein and Ms. Wilkinson opposing. It's approved. Next item on the agenda is item number D, which is gonna be tabled, I'll ask Wilkinson to table that, it's scheduled to be tabled till July 6, 2015. Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you. I'd like to make a move to table item 4D, 2015-124. It's a public hearing for zoning request Z15-002, rezoning of the subject property from residential townhouse district to general commercial for the use of the property for commercial purposes. 5.039 acres, landlot 342, the vacant landlot property off of South Cobb Drive at the end of Askay Drive. So the request is to table the, applicant has requested to table this item to July 6, 2015.
Motion's second, tabled to July 6, 2015. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved, seven zero. Item 5 is previous licenses, we have none. Item 6 is formal business. A, ordinance 2015-10, approve the amendment to the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, entitled alcoholic beverages, Article 2, Division 2, Application Section 118, entitled distance from certain locations. Ms. Howard, the background, please.
Yes, this proposal would give the city the ability to waive distance requirements for beer and wine sales by the drink. As it stands today, the city does not have any waiver provisions in the ordinance to address unique circumstances. Approval of this amendment would have no impact on package stores, and state law does leave distance requirements as to sales by the drink to the local jurisdiction. Staff feels that this is the best way to handle this.
This is Ms. Bluestein.
Yes. Do we have any questions, or can I go ahead and make a motion? Okay. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2015-10, that's to approve the amendment of the city, to the City of Smyrna's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, entitled alcoholic beverages, Article 2, Division 2, applications, Section 118, entitled distance from certain locations. Distance from Certain Locations.
Second.
Motion's second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved, seven zero. Item 6B, V15-022, Public Hearing Variance Request, V15-022, allow pouring of wine and malt beverages at a restaurant within 600 feet from a public school and 200 feet from residential property. Land Lot 634, 0.55 acres, 1651 Roswell Street. That's what I said. Ethiopian Cuisine is the applicant. The background, please, Ms.
Yes, the applicant requests a variance to allow pouring of beer and wine at a restaurant within 600 feet of a public school. The restaurant is located at 1651 Roswell Street, Suite C, and the school within 600 feet is Haven Academy, located at 1595 Hawthorne Avenue. As well, Morgan's Point Apartments are within 200 feet.
I know the applicants here, they've been waiting patiently. If y'all want to step forward. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to give public comment concerning the variance request and the issuance of this beer and wine pouring license? As the record show, there is none. This is in Ms. Nullwich's district. Ms. Nullwich.
Yes, and for clarification, Jeffrey, this is just the variance. This is not the privileged license, correct?
That's correct. It's just the variance applying the new ordinance to this particular location.
They got to come back and get there?
They would still have to go through the regular license process.
Well, wait a minute. Okay, so, well, I wasn't here, so it's good. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for your patience. We're very happy you're here. We're very happy you chose to open your restaurant here in Smyrna, and I'm glad you chose Ward 3. I think that it's a very good addition to a neighborhood, to this particular neighborhood. I'm very happy that you're here. Do you have any questions for us about what this variance means? And I have a lot, and just to, before you answer that, there are a lot of questions that will then come and ask you when you do come forward for your privileged license, but I'm not going to grill you on those questions tonight, because I know that that's a whole separate process.
Well, thank you very much. We just opened up this restaurant as a new addition to the city, and we have been living here for the last 10 years. This is just a family business. Our children are going to school in Campbell, and then we just wanted to stay here and raise our childrens by doing this, and wanted to introduce the Ethiopian culture to the neighborhood, as there is nothing in Cab County. So we are pleased to continue to do this. So as it is a full restaurant, we wanted to have alcohol and beverage pouring as addition to spicy food we serve in the city. That is the whole thing.
You're what Smyrna's all about. We are a melting pot for... Everybody ends up, and it's great. That's what makes us what we are.
Now we don't have to drive to the Cab County anymore for good Ethiopian food.
And by the way, some of us have missed dinner. Are you open late tonight? We can get back there in about 45 minutes.
At this rate, we're probably going to miss breakfast, too.
I want to... This is a crazy question. Tell me just a little bit about Ethiopian food, just a short.
It's delicious.
Well, as has been said, it is very delicious, tasty, and spicy, spicy as needed. We can make it spicy, mild, so that is why we needed the beverage and the wine to follow up.
Well, I wouldn't chase up with no nasty water, I promise.
Could you say that it's very, very spicy?
I wouldn't dare to say that. I wouldn't dare to say that.
The spices, the spices, very, very.
We have different dishes, you know. Some of them are spicy, some of them are mild.
Thank you.
My children like it because you can eat it with your fingers.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for investing in Smyrna.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
Any more questions? At this time, I would like to go ahead and move to approve item 6B, that is V15-022. This is the public hearing in the variance request to allow pouring of wine and malt beverages at a restaurant within 600 feet from a public school and 200 feet from residential property. Land Lot 634, it's a 0.55 acres, 1651 Roswell Street, Gersha Ethiopian Cuisine. And again, this is the variance request, not the privileged license.
Second.
Motion's second to approve this variance request. No discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, seven zero. Thank y'all very much. We look forward to, I guess you go through the process now to get your license, I guess so. Item 6C under formal business, 2015-193, is approval of the 2015 pay plan update. Ms. Howard, the background, please.
Yes, considering recent and pending changes in the market, the city engaged the Archer Company to update its market data from 2014 and to reassess the pay plan. As a result of this analysis, recommendations for updating the City of Smyrna's pay ranges were submitted and requested to be adopted by council affected with the beginning of the FY16 budget.
Mr. Wayne Lenika, who chairs the HR Committee. Mr. Lenika.
Thanks, your honor. Do we have any questions by council? If not, then I will move approval of item 2015-193, the 2015 pay plan update.
And motion's second to approve this 2015 pay plan update. Any further discussion?
Just a notation that this is posted on the city's website for public review.
All those in favor of the motion? It's approved, seven zero. Item 6D under formal business is 2015-161, adoption of proposed budget fiscal year 2016. Ms. Toni Jo Howard, who is also Finance Director and Acting City Administrator, along with Ms. Tammy Satter Jones and Ken Sudwitz. Ms. Howard.
Yes, we had our public hearing last council meeting for the budget. Jared's going to go over just a few changes that were made since then to present that to y'all to be adopted tonight. I did just want to take a quick minute and briefly thank the department heads again for working so well with me and Jared during this budget season. We were in an interesting situation in that I did have both of those roles, and so it was definitely a collaborative effort with everyone this year. So thanks again to them.
Ms. Howard. Yes, since our budget presentation in public hearing a couple of weeks ago, the council has made a couple of recommendations, some priorities that they've identified that they want to see included in the FY16 budget. My presentation's going to be brief tonight. I just want to review those additions and let you know the impact to the total budget. We'll start with general fund operations. The council has requested $42,000 be added for a community liaison full-time staff position. We've added $22,000 for supplemental mailings to residents, $3,750 for mayor and council raises. These would be effective after the November elections, if the council votes to adopt them this calendar year. The council's added two capital projects to the general fund, CIP. We've got $66,450 budgeted for vehicle paint and body repairs, and $25,000 budgeted for community center AV upgrades. In the hotel motel fund, the council also added $50,000 for professional services. In terms of the budget impact, if you look at just the general fund adjustments, the new expenditures total $159,000. These will be offset by a reduction in our budgeted general fund contingency from about $1.3 million to $1.15 million. Remember as well that we're expecting to use about $450,000 of the contingency to fund that new salary table adjustment and corresponding 2% cost of living adjustment. This will leave us with about $700,000 in contingency. The two new capital projects will add $91,450 on both the revenue and the expenditure side of the capital projects fund. The result of that is that we will be adding that amount to our total proposed budget. And in the hotel motel fund, we will be reducing that fund's anticipated transfer to cash reserves from $183,000 to about $133,000. To conclude, the FY16 total proposed budget now stands at $74,765,746. This is an increase of about $1.4 million, or 1.9% from the prior fiscal year. As I mentioned two weeks ago, this budget assumes that the Smyrna millage rate will remain level at 8.99 mils. We had a few lean years during the recession, but we tightened our belts, and we made it through without pay cuts, and without furlough days, and without raising taxes. Now our tax digest is projected to rise 7%, and that gives us the opportunity to catch up on some of our capital projects, and to compensate our employees at a level that's competitive with other jurisdictions in the area. At the end of the day, it's a reasonable 1.9% increase. I do ask for your consideration and your approval of this proposed budget.
By us adopting, approving the budget, the issue of the raises still has to come before the council as far as elected officials, is that correct? This is not listed as a public hearing, although if there's anyone here that would like to ask any questions about anything that we have briefly mentioned, or you can go to the, as mentioned, you can go to the website and see it all. Or has anybody got a budget document?
There's also, excuse me, mayor, there's also hard copies available at the library circulation desk and the city clerk's office.
If anybody want to read this, you can take it home with you.
On the second floor of City Hall.
Leave a rope somewhere so we can pull you out. That's a big document. Thank you, Jared.
I carry it with me at all times.
Okay. All right. Ms. Nullwich.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to echo what Ms. Howard said. The budget is always a collaborative effort, and this year was no exception. It really was even made more so by the fact that we have people wearing different hats. Jared, thank you so much for everything you've done for this budget to present it clearly and concisely. Thank you to all the department heads and the staff that worked very hard and made the decisions that needed to be made to get this document to where we can be voting on it tonight. You know, we don't have a millage rate. Jared was exactly right. We made it through the recession without having to do any kinds of furloughs, or layoffs, or raise the millage rate. We are rare. We're a rare bird in that regard, and it's something that didn't happen by accident. It happened because, again, everyone, every staff member, every department head, and every resident really understood what it was going to take to allow our city to continue to operate at the level of service that our citizens are used to, but also in a way that is very respectful of the money that the taxpayers do put into our coffers. At this point, I am very comfortable making a motion to adopt this budget and to approve item 6D, which is the adoption of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2016. The budget is available online. I'll be linking to it through my Facebook page. It's available through the city's website. And if you have any questions, you can always contact any of the council members that you see here tonight, and I move to approve that.
Second. Motion's second to approve. Any other discussion, comments? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved, seven zero. Item 6E, 2015-185, authorization to enter into a contract with Zachster, Inc. for bike share program services in the amount of $32,960 to be funded out of CIP fund balance. Background, Ms. Toni Jo Howard.
Yes, staff is requesting authorization to enter into a contract with Zachster, Inc. for the city's first-time bike share program. The RFI was sent out to nine bike share program suppliers and partners, and Zachster was chosen as the best fit for the city. Zachster... I'm sorry. Initially, will be 16 bikes at four stations, and this is our startup, and we look to possibly grow this program in the future.
Ms. Taryn Nullwich.
Thank you, sir. I'm excited about this one. This is exactly like it sounds. It is a bike share program, and we are, I think, going to be one of the first communities to get something like this up and running in the metro area. Metro Atlanta is also working on their bike share program. They plan to have 500 bikes. We are not that big, and we are going to start with a pilot program of 16 bikes. And we hope to have this up and running again within the next few months. We are fortunate, I think the vendor that we will be working with is one that understands that we are a dynamic city, and we really require a degree of nimbleness and responsiveness that a larger city might not have, quite be able to work in quite the same way. We're not 100% sure where the stations are going to be yet, because, again, we are council people, we come from a variety of backgrounds, but none of those is actually in the logistics of bike sharing. So we are going to work with the company, with the vendor to, you know, they have algorithms, they have ways to do this to determine where the best locations are going to be. We have put so much into the city's bicycling, and bike lane, and multipurpose trail infrastructure over the past several years in Smyrna, and I think this is going to be a way to take advantage of it. I was actually talking to, I've talked to several folks in the media about this, and one gentleman said to me, yeah, there's a reporter at the AJC who, when the Braves CEO talked about people riding their bikes to the games, he laughed out loud and was, I think, being a little bit dismissive of our little town and our ability to pedal on two wheels to get from one point to another, because we are, of course, outside of the perimeter. Now, I laughed when I heard that, because the first thing that I thought when I realized where the Braves stadium was going to be located was, holy cow, that's two and a half miles from my house, and there are trails there. It's a pretty easy bike ride. I cannot wait to ride my bike there. So, yeah, I think people underestimate Smyrna on a regular basis, and I think that this is just another example of how Smyrna can bring forth amenities and bring forth things to its residents and to also visitors to our city that really show how dynamic and vibrant this community is. And that's why I'm so excited to be able to bring this forward.
Those two young men right there also want to go bike riding.
Yes, we haven't recognized the scouts yet, and they've been phenomenal. I mean, you guys picked a doozy to come to get. I hope you get the pin and not just the belt, because you have earned it. Are there any other questions or discussion about this?
Let's get the motion. Can we get the motion?
Yeah, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and move to approve item 6E. This is authored, it's item 2015-185, 2015-185, authorization to enter into a contract with Zachster, Incorporated, for a bike share program services in the amount of $32,960 to be funded out of CIP fund balance.
Second.
Motion's second to approve this bike share program service. Anybody got any comments?
I just wanted to make a point that this is an innovative approach that larger cities have undertaken. Generally, somebody of our size has not undertaken this, but we believe the walkability that has been created over the last 20 years in Smyrna, and the bikeability, the trails, the connectivity that we represent as a city with a Silver Comet Trail, with our growing population geared towards using all modes, that this is going to be a good fit for us. This has potential. Right now, we're doing this as a service to the city. This has an opportunity to grow beyond that, to be revenue neutral, and actually to maybe even spin off some revenue for some of the other parks, bike ride, share, other elements of this through sponsorships and such. But we believe this experiment will be fruitful and popular with the city, with citizens, and I'm eagerly awaiting to see how, one day, it'll reach all the way down to Ward 7.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved, seven zero. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item made as consent agenda. Will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval? Ms. Howard.
Yes, we have 2015-187, approval of the mayor and council meeting minutes for June 1st, 2015, and item 2015-199, approval to use council chambers for a Ward 1 meeting with Melanie Pritchett, Wednesday, June 24th, 2015, 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Here most approve the consent agenda. Motion's second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. One more. Seven zero. Comedian reports will start tonight with Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call forth Chief
I'd like to call forth Chief Agri to give us a report from the fire department while he's coming forth. You know, temperatures are high and climbing, so we're going to have a hot, looks like a hot summer. We need to prepare accordingly. I'm sure you'll remind us.
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. I'll be quick. I just have two quick, two things. I'm glad that you mentioned that, Councilman Finnel. One thing that we've started to do is we've started to share some information under the news link on the city website, so it's also, it's on the city homepage, and also, some of the things I'm going to talk about tonight are on the city homepage and also accessible on the city fire department page, which is linked through the homepage. Heat safety, things to watch out for, hydration, that type of stuff, will be posted on there next week, so thanks for mentioning that. What is on the city homepage as we speak right now and was added today is the fact that next week is Lightning Safety Awareness Week for the entire week. It's, you know, the beginning of the springtime, summertime thunderstorm pop-ups and that kind of thing. What we've done is we posted a two-page document with a lot of really detailed and good information on how you can be lightning safe, essentially, but of course, I'm not going to read all of those, but essentially, we're asking that people during Lightning Awareness Week all next week to take the time to learn basic safety measures, to avoid unnecessary risks, some of the things like, obviously, if you see lightning, please go indoors, because it's kind of dangerous, and to stay indoors for 30 minutes after hearing the last thunderclap. Again, it's a two-page document, a lot of good information on there. Encourage everybody to check that on the city's webpage. The last thing I just wanted to mention was, I think probably everybody is aware of the new legislation beginning that will be effective July the 1st, that for the first time, at least in my lifetime and maybe ever, I don't really know, it'll be legal to purchase and use fireworks, and not just the sprinklers or the sparklers that we've had for the last few years, but everything that leaves the ground and goes way up high in the sky and goes boom. So, while, and I wanted to, just for the sake of clarification, really quick, talk about two different aspects. The legality of the consumer, the end user, using them, effective July 1st, it will be legal, so arguably for 4th of July celebrations, even though many of us have enjoyed those for years, technically, it will be legal now, effective July the 1st. But the second aspect of that is the ability to be able to purchase consumer fireworks in the state of Georgia, and while technically legal through the legislation effective July the 1st, it's not going to be a reality for Georgia citizens to actually have a place in the state of Georgia to purchase consumer fireworks, probably until after the 1st of the year, because of all of the things that have to happen, not only with the state, the required state licensure, but all of the, all the way down to the end distributor and the end retail salesperson, that's going to have to happen in every city and every county in the state. So, it's going to be legal effective July the 1st, so one thing that we're going to post on the news, the city homepage, under the news beginning next Monday, will be a two-page document on fireworks safety. There's a lot of information from the Consumer Product Safety Commission, but essentially, about 12,000 people, on average, annually, get injured from the use of consumer fireworks, and the vast majority of that happens on or around July the 4th. We're just asking people to use fireworks with extreme caution, have fun, but be careful. Obviously, older children should be closely supervised, and we're asking that people consider that younger children not be allowed to play with fireworks at all, to include sparklers. So, again, the, just like the Lightning Safety Awareness information, beginning next Monday, there'll be about two pages worth of really valuable safety information as it relates to fireworks safety. So, we just ask that everybody have fun, just be careful.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions of the chief? Thank you. Okay. Chief David Lee, Smyrna Police Department. I know they've been busy. I know he has some folks on the street. I'm particularly proud of the DUI efforts that are getting some of the bad guys off the roads that are impaired while behind the wheel and endangering both themselves and others, and I appreciate the hard work.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Those, those guys on DUI, they, they do an excellent job. I do want to say this. This year was my third year at the budget process, and this was one of the most smoothest budget processes that I've worked through since I've been here, and, you know, I thank Ms. Howard and, but everybody else as well. It's, I, I agree with a lot of the statements, you know, all the department heads worked real well together, but like I said, this was the smoothest budget process that I've ever been through. Couple of things I wanted to go over. There's a new Senate Bill 138, establish new guidelines for the county DFAX boards, you know, it's Department of Family and Children's Services, and mandates that they have regional advisory boards, and for the DFAX Regional Advisory Board here for us, one of our detectives, Meredith Romali, had been selected to be a member of the board. I also was asked to be on the Brown Mackey College Criminal Justice Program Advisory Board. Unfortunately, it's an unpaid thing, but...
We get a lot of that, yeah.
Yes, but, yeah, we're, we're real excited, because my whole goal with getting involved with that organization is to use it to recruit officers out of their criminal justice program.
The beauty of that unpaid job is next year, they double your salary, so it's, you've got that to look forward to.
Okay, very good. And I have to admit, the director of that program's an old Army sergeant of mine, so he's still bossing me around a little bit, so. One of the other things I wanted to say, on Labor Day, we're going to have the Smyrna 5K, which is a combined effort of the Smyrna Public Safety Foundation and the Smyrna Optimist We got a new program that we're getting ready to put out. We'll be getting a press release out sometime this week, but what we're going to be doing is offering businesses inside the city of Smyrna that when they need to do a bank drop, as long as they, their business in the city and their bank is in the city, and they request an escort, that we'll escort them from their business to the bank. Now, they have to understand that calls for service comes first, and, you know, we may not be able to respond to them in five minutes, but it's just another service to help, you know, keep them safe.
Excellent. Any questions of the chief?
Good deal.
All right. Thank you, David. Thank you very much.
For the members of the public, I constantly remind, but I have to remind myself that when we see a peace officer, firefighter, park ranger, anyone within our law enforcement community, I, I think we owe them a great debt of gratitude. They stand, stand ready to protect our, our businesses, our homes, our families in our community, and we appreciate what you do, and I say thank you, and I want to do that every chance I get. On a matter for Ward 7, I have a town hall meeting scheduled for this Wednesday. It is in relation to zoning matters. Many of you have been familiar with the proposals that are coming through now on a more regular basis, and we had three projects approved in last fall's tranche, and I want to give updates on those three. Joined with the staff at Bronner Hall, it'll be Wednesday, Bronner Hall, 7:00 p.m., and our goal is to update the Tackett Farm project, both of the North Cooper Lake projects, Park Place and Cooper Lake Park, I think it's called, to be called, and then the fourth one is the one that's a currently active proposal that has even an amendment since last week, that I'm told by the proposer would be ready for review by Wednesday, and that is the project that will be entered on North Cooper Lake, just, basically just north of the Bennett Woods neighborhood. So, if you live in Ward 7 or you're interested in zoning matters, I welcome you to join us on Wednesday night. I've invited Councilman Welch, who'll inherit this territory under the new redistricting plan, and the staff at Community Development have been very kind. The economic development team will be there to answer the questions, as will the owner of the property and the developer, to ask and answer questions, and we'll make an evening of it to bring everybody up to speed. And then finally, tonight, I want to pay tribute to two, two people, two citizens of Smyrna that meant an awful lot to this city and it's where it is today. Dorothy Bacon endured an awful lot putting up with Arthur and Max Bacon, I am to understand, but that woman was tough as nails, and what I understand, she was sweet when she wanted to be and in-your-face when she needed to be, and as a citizen, the former First Lady, and as a hero for an awful lot of people, as a young woman, she did something that nobody else thought could be possible, joining the military, going overseas, serving her country, and then actually having to whip Arthur Bacon into shape, a tough task in of itself. But then, a long life with an awful lot of friends and a wide swath of influence on a lot of different fronts. Dorothy Bacon will be missed by Smyrna, but will be remembered by all who had the privilege, as did I, of, of meeting her and being in her presence, and we, we miss her already, but she'll be with us always. The other person is Charles Ronald, we all knew him as Pete Wood. He's a career banker, but he did a lot of other things, and at the service on Sunday, Max did a great job with the eulogy, but I, I didn't know some aspects of Pete's life that others were very familiar with, and they didn't know other aspects that I knew. I took an opportunity today to pull off of my bookshelf a book that Pete wrote, signed and gave to me, called The Paper Boy. How many of you have seen this book and are familiar with it? Pete wrote what was a definitive history of his life through the mid-20th century, and it's full of facts, a lot of family trees, a lot of things that bewildered me whenever I first opened the, the book, but it represented a life's work of a man who didn't want the credit, who didn't want to be in the spotlight, who, in a yeoman's way, performed his work at every task he was assigned or sought, and he did so in an unmatched fashion. And I wrote a note, and I just want to read what I wrote. "It's as though short in stature, Pete Wood was a mountain of a man. His integrity, financial prowess, and quiet manner made him an indispensable player in modern Smyrna's growth and development. He knew where the money was and whether opportunities were a good investment for the city's taxpayers. I've been honored to follow him on council, and I can't fill his shoes, I've learned that 10 or 12 of us couldn't, but I strive daily to emulate his work on behalf of the citizens of Ward 7. He was a friend and a mentor to me. His kind encouragement, advice, and unmatched knowledge of the people of Smyrna made his and Lily's support crucial to, to my having an opportunity to be elected. He'll be sorely missed, and our prayers and love go to Lily and the family as we celebrate what was a full life of Pete Wood. We'll miss Smyrna's own paper boy, who delivered in every aspect of his accomplished life. Pete Wood, rest in peace, my friend."
Mr. White.
Thank you, Your Honor. Kay Bolick, our HR Director, has a brief report for us this evening.
Good evening. My brief report is about the people that have reached their service milestones for this month. I think it's always a good thing to, to bring those dames out to light. We have had three people this month in June that reached their five-year anniversary. Andy Harrell, which is a heavy equipment operator with us with our Public Works, David Bartlett, our police officer, and Joe Paul, one of our fire engineers. At 10 years, we had Tiffany Wallace, our Community Relations Assistant, and our top one for this month is Samuel Jones, who is a crew worker, 15 years with Public Works. And again, we want to thank them for their continued service with us, and hopefully each month, we'll get a whole bunch more people to tell you they've reached their milestones.
Thank you, Kay.
Thank you, Ms. Bolick. I think everybody in Smyrna probably knows and maybe has been to Sprouts on the East-West Connector at South Cobb. The Sprouts Farmers Market opened last week. It was packed. I mean, unbelievable. They had their grand opening at 7:00 a.m., and the line went from the door all the way down the building and around the corner and all the way to the back of the building, and God knows where it went from there. I've never seen so many people lined up to go in a store at 7:00 a.m. Smyrna is excited about that store, and that's going to be a great addition to our community. If you haven't been, I'd encourage you to go. Pick your time carefully, because parking is at a premium many times of the day, but we're excited to have the Sprouts store open. I too want to comment on passing of a number of people we've lost this month. June has been a sad month for Smyrna in many ways, starting with the passing of former police captain Ed Klack, Ward 6 resident. Did a great job for our department, taught criminal justice at KSU. His wife and son, of course, miss him as do we, and, you know, we're sorry to see and learn of Ed's passing. Also, Mayor Richard Sailors of Powder Springs passed away, and Max and I, I know, worked with Richard many times over many years. One of the things that struck me at the funeral home was that, Mayor, there was only a few of us left in local government who remember Richard when he was Mayor of Powder Springs. Yourself, Philip Goldstein, I'm not sure of anybody else at the municipal level in Cobb, can appreciate what Richard did for Powder Springs. Richard was a good friend and a mentor in many ways, and he looked at what Smyrna was doing in the, in the 90s, and he set about trying to do some of that for his community in Powder Springs, and I think was very successful. You know, we miss Richard as well, and I won't go into a long-winded dissertation on Councilman Pete Wood, but it was an honor to, to work with Pete for more than 21 years. Max and I were on council when he was first appointed in August of 1991, and he was all the things that people said he was, and we extend our condolences to his family and friends, and I've said many times publicly, and I'll say it again tonight, in my estimation, Pete Wood joining our council was equivalent, in my mind, to a gift from God. He was that talented, that capable, that honest and ethical. He set a standard and, and a bar that none of us can ever probably achieve. He was classic, and he will be sorely missed. And finally, Max, I just also want to publicly express my condolences on the loss of your mother. She was a great woman. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkerson. Wilkerson.
Thank you. I'd like to call Mary Moore from the library to give us a report.
Hi, good evening. There are two more weeks to view the wonderful exhibits currently on display in the library's upper-level galleries. There are portraits and landscapes in oil and acrylic by Joe Lor on the walls, and then in our display cases are pottery such as bowls, jugs, and vases by Pat Gresham. They're two really beautiful displays, so be sure to come by before June 30 to enjoy them. While people visit Smyrna Library, they really are taking great advantage of our strong, reliable, free Wi-Fi. With the help of the city's IT department, we started tracking usage of the Wi-Fi this year. This is the first year we've really done that, and as of yesterday, 10,000 individuals have utilized that Wi-Fi just this year, so I thought that was a pretty remarkable number. Another impressive statistic is the amount of time our summer readers have logged so far. They have read a quarter of a million minutes already, and we're just two weeks into the, to the summer. Summer reading is going extremely well, the participation has been great, and event attendance is, is up. The Friends of Smyrna Library have underwritten some really particularly fabulous prizes this year as reading incentives, so our adult members, participation-wise, are up as well. Congratulations to Beth H. and Mary Ann F. for winning gift bags and our weekly raffles so far. To learn more about our children's, teen, and adult summer reading programs, go to smyrnalibrary.com. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Now, I'd like to ask Steve Ciaccio, Director of the Parks and Rec Department... Now I'd like to ask Steve Ciaccio, Director of the Parks and Rec Department, to give us a report.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, folks. I wanted to let you know that this next movie by Moonlight on Saturday will be, of course, at Telebronner Park. That is on June 20. Featured is Alexander and the Terrible, Horrible, No Good, Very Bad Day. Bring the kids, bring a blanket, it will be warm, so pay attention to what the fire chief said about staying hydrated. There are still opportunities to purchase a table for the July 11 Summer Concert Series on the Green. The band featured will be Faithless Town, they're considered rock, excuse me, roots rock or Americana. As a resident, you'd be paying $30 for a table for six chairs, and $40 if you're a non-resident. Either way, it's a great deal. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would also like to share my condolences with the family of Pete Wood, and I'm just sorry that I didn't get the opportunity to work with him. And I'd also like to share my condolences to Max Bacon, our mayor, for the loss of his mother as well, and to his family. Thank you.
It's Corky Welsh.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let's see, Ms. Anne Kirk talked to us a little about Keep Smyrna Beautiful and our new recycle center that's opened and welcoming visitors.
And recycling.
And recycling.
We're going to have to get a counter. We can't keep up with the people, so it's being well-received. We have lots of good news. The community garden has plots in all sizes still available. You still have time to get in two full growing seasons before the frost, so please, if you're interested in a plot, get in touch with us. Water is included in your lease fees. I'd like to thank the Jockle Garden Club for a fabulous plant sale this week at our Fresh Market. It was just one of the great things that we have going. The fruits and vegetables, local fruits and vegetables are coming in now, so if you enjoy fresh vegetables with that homegrown taste, please come to the Fresh Market, 8:00 a.m. till noon, every Saturday, at the First Baptist Church parking lot. And as of today, we still plan to be open on July the 4th, so you'll be able to get your fresh watermelons for the rest of the day. We've finally been able to take ownership of our new van for the community service program, and we're all so grateful that the van has air conditioning, which, after driving the old one over to Public Works today, I thought it was going to pass out before I even got there. It's just unbearably hot for those people to be able to work, and we'll be much more productive. We were able to use the van for our litter index on last Wednesday, which is a drive-around windshield index of the windshield survey of the entire city. 70 miles, 10 in each ward that we score, and the city is looking really good. We, I want to thank Eva Tackett, Gary Nelson, and Lois Lewis, who are board members of Keep Smyrna Beautiful, that rode with us. This takes about six hours, and the information that we get from it is shared with the Police Department and Community Development to locate any kind of problem areas that we find. It's just an extra set of eyes and ears, but our score was 1.4, one being no litter out of four being heavily littered, which is illegal dumping. And it's a little bit up from last year, but I think statistically we could account that for the difference in the scoring team that we had this year. The city looks really good, and we really didn't find any bad, bad places. So that's all I have. Thank you very much, and have a good week.
Thank you, Anne. I believe Scott Stokes is out of town. I'll call on Frank Martin for the, I don't know where Scott is, but I know he's not in Smyrna, so he's out of town. Officially.
I think Frank grew a beard while he was waiting.
Couple of things. On the Concord Road Splotch Project, all the decorative roadway and pedestrian lighting are complete. Georgia Power has been instructed to remove the old lighting wood poles. Also, the Gan Road Storm Sewer, excavation is about 60% complete. The contractor is scheduled to pour about 50% of the mud slab at the bottom of the culvert, starting this week. Also, the Belmont Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation, the contractor is refugating the last of the excavation area and cleaning up the debris in that area. Project's scheduled to start curb replacement on Linwood Court, curb replacement on Howell Drive, and water main replacement on South Cobb Drive from Concord to West Jersey, and that's an upgrade on the waterline.
Frank, can I ask Frank a question? I was late. I just happened to go by the Gan Road Bridge or whatever. That's, the thing's deep, but I saw a lot of mud, seemed like it had gotten into the creek. It sort of surprised me. I don't know who the contractor is, but I'd ask two things. We make sure that he's not allowing mud to get in the creek, and also, when's it going to be finished?
The finish part, I'm not sure of. On the other stuff, little Paul Osborn, and they go by there daily to make sure they comply with what they say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank. I'd also like to extend my condolences to the mayor and the loss of his mother and the Wood family. I had the privilege of having Mr. Wood as my councilman for a while, and he never failed to respond to me. Anytime I needed anything or needed at least someone to complain to or talk to, he was always there for me. He was a great man and was, you know, just a true citizen that it'd be hard to perform all the services that he did in one lifetime. With that, Your Honor, I yield.
Ms. Terry Nellwich.
Thank you. I didn't know if finance has anything in addition to the budget tonight, but I think that that was a pretty comprehensive update that we received. And for Community Relations, I'm going to be giving the report on behalf of Jennifer Bennett. There, of course, is the concert coming up on July 11th. Tomorrow is Food Truck Tuesday. You can look for the lineup of trucks on the city's website and the city's Facebook page. We are going to have the band tomorrow night. It is Thunder Gypsy. They are a four-piece classic R&B, blues, soul, and rock band, and they will be the live music entertainment for tomorrow night at Food Truck Tuesdays. I also wanted to let everyone know that this week, Halpern Enterprises submitted their plans for the Jockle Plaza site. We have been waiting for this for many, many, many years, and now this is the latest incarnation for what is proposed for this site. Of course, Halpern, we know owns Belmont Hills, they're building that up right now. They have been involved and have owned property in the city of Smyrna for decades, almost as long as that hill has been there on Bank Street. So those plans are available at Community Development, and I'll be talking more about them on my Facebook page and in my newsletter, and you'll be hearing more about them here moving forward. So that is very exciting. I want to extend my condolences to the mayor for the loss of his mother, Dot. She was a great lady, she was a classy lady. There are not many like her left. One of them, though, is Lily Wood, and I want to extend my condolences to Lily, who is one of the classiest ladies I have had the privilege to know. She is gracious and lovely, and I am so sorry for her loss. Pete was a kind, thoughtful, wonderful man. He was always kind and gracious and very patient with me, and it is clear that Cobb County would not be what it is today without the influence of Pete Wood. He was calm, he was quiet, he was gentle, and he accomplished an unbelievable amount of work that made this county and this city so very great. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
This will be the shortest report I've ever given.
Good.
We're up $50,000 from April to May.
I'm sorry, I said, if you haven't been to the Jockle Garden Sale, I didn't even know what was going on. I went over there to look at something else at the market and stumbled into this, but next time they have it, go, because they had some beautiful plants, great prices, you know. And then, Saturday afternoon, I stumbled into Sprouts. My God, you would have thought that we've never seen a grocery store before. That place, I don't know what was going on there. There were so many people in the store, you could barely move around, but I'm going to go back in a week or two, and hopefully it will have calmed down a little bit. I too would like to, at this point, extend my condolences to Mayor Bacon for the loss of his mother, Dot. She was such a sweet lady. The last time I saw her was at a Veterans Day ceremony, and she was just happy, happy, and a very, very nice lady. And also too, to the family of Pete Woods. He was one of my favorites, and he'll be missed. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The town hall meeting that I'm going to have for Ward 1 will be June 24th. That'll be a week from Thursday, from 6:30 to 8:00. We're going to talk about Spring Road upgrades, and we're going to talk about all the exciting things that are happening in Smyrna and the different projects that are coming out of the ground. So if anybody's listening, I hope to see some of you at the meeting or all of you at the meeting. There will be some signs that will be posted this week telling everybody, so if you hear it tonight, let everybody know, because we're going to have a really good meeting. The vision process is well underway. Five of the work group leaders have had their meetings. Most of them are starting on two, three meetings now, and they will be bringing forward a report to, I'm sorry, 24th is on a Wednesday. They will be bringing forward to the council at a council meeting or at a city pre-council meeting, a report on the people they have, what they've been doing, how successful it has been. And we're really happy to have the community liaison, because we're to that point now where we need a lot of extra help. And Kristi Almond has done a fabulous job, but she's also working for the mayor and council, so she's been doing double duty. I too want to just tell everybody that that service for Pete Wood on Sunday, I think, was one of the best funerals I've ever been to. And I know that sounds really weird, because I was talking to my mother, and I said, that was the sweetest funeral. She goes, what in the world are you talking about? And I said, well, everybody that spoke talked about Pete, about how kind he was, about how unpretentious he was, about what all he had done. I mean, I did not know that he was instrumental in starting Cobb Hospital. There was just a lot of things. A person from Wellstar spoke, because he's been on that board for, I guess, forever. And Pete was just, as Lily put it, one of the sweetest men she's ever known. And I thought that was great for them to be married all these years, and she still thinks he's the sweetest man she's ever known. So I told Lily I'd be visiting her in a couple of weeks so that we could just sit down and talk, so we will be going by there to see her. And Max, I've already told him a couple of times about how sorry I am about Dot. She was a frisky woman, and Max can attest to that. But Linda, Max's sister, and Max's daughter, both got up and spoke, and I don't know how they did it, but they did. And Linda said, she talked about her mother and what all she loved to do, and play bridge and go out to eat, and she said she was the only woman that ever got kicked out of hospice. She had somebody pick her up and take her to lunch, and so, I don't know, it was as cute as it could be. So, Max, we're really sorry. I know y'all are going to miss her, but you got a great family support, so. And I guess with that, I will yield, but I did go by Sprouts as well. I think it was last, well, it was a grand opening, like, at 4:00. So I go over there, like, oh, I couldn't hardly find a parking place, had to drive around to drive around until somebody left. And, but I went back today with a friend of mine who lives out in Ostelle, and she hasn't been here, and it wasn't quite as crowded. And it was really nice, but I mean, the prices they have, I hope they maintain them, because it's just, they're just really awesome. And with that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Don't urge you anything. Jeffrey?
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Heather?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. We do not have a show call here, and we've got two folks that have signed up for Citizens Input, Alec Bakri, 3459, Shawnee Trail comments.
My comments tonight are on the article last week on this bicycle program. It has to do with accessibility and connectability. If you rent a bike downtown and, according to the article, rent it for 30, 40 minutes, you're going nowhere when you've got traffic on Windy Hill, Concord, Atlanta Road, including lights. And you can't drive on sidewalks. If that's the case, then the police got to look the other way. It's dangerous with traffic. And we're going to see something. To me, a bicycle ride is where you can put a bike on your top of your car or in your trunk, go over the Silver Comet Trail, park and drive for miles, no aggravation with traffic, and not have a problem and have nice scenery to see. I know of no trails in Smyrna that have that. And for people to want to just rent a bike for 30, 45 minutes to get over to Galleria or over to the Silver Comet Trail, it's going to take them that long one way to get over there with all the stop signs and lights. Now, an issue was one of the council people stating the food thing on Tuesday night. You could go down and rent the bike and drive a half a mile back to the food trucks? That makes no sense. It's too much of a hassle. Now, if you bring your bike over there, it could get stolen. Who's responsible for that? Another thing the paper didn't mention, who's paying for the headgear for the people riding the bikes? Another cost. Now, it's also logistics. I live a mile from the food truck, so I can easily take a walk, walk the mile over, enjoy the walk, enjoy whatever's over there, and walk home. I just don't see how, if this is such a good program right now, that people that do have bikes, and I'm a firm believer that most people that ride bikes own their own bikes, are not riding around, you don't see them on Atlanta Road, Windy Hill, Spring, or Concord. They ride around, if it's like Vining's Estates, that's a larger area subdivision, you can ride around over there, and there's a nice exercise and workout. But just to rent a bike to try and get somewhere, we don't have any attractions to go see that are worth fighting the traffic. They're going to have to allow people to ride their bicycles. Now, I was just talking to a lady outside, and she said, what are you going to speak about? And I says, the bicycle program. She says, well, out in Grand Junction, they tried something like that program. So many of the bikes were stolen, they had to cancel it. Now, another part of that article that was interesting is comparing Seattle and Austin, Texas. Those are states that are very spread out. I've been out there. They have a lot of room, and it's not as congested as we have had here. I call it they built from the outside in versus Smyrna's building the inside out. Again, they have a lot of area out there and scenery to see. We don't have that luxury. And I honestly believe, I've talked to a lot of people since the article come out to see if that interest is there, and not one of them have said it's not worth the aggravation. If you, again, think about it, to rent a bike and just drive, fighting traffic and the lights, which you got to stop at, 35 minutes goes by very quickly. You're not going to be able to cover too much distance. That, to me, is not really enjoying the meditation of riding a bike and the quiet of, like, Silver Comet Trail or over at Galleria. It's too difficult to get to those spots just for 35, 40 minutes, according to the article. So I'm concerned that I honestly believe this is not a feasible program for our tax dollars, because you're going to have additional costs. Again, the bikes are stolen, who pays for it? Headgear, bicycle racks to secure at some of these facilities, that's an extra cost. And I don't see the people of Smyrna being very interested in this. I think in the long run, this program is going to be very unsuccessful. Thank you.
Chair Simon, 3470 Vintage Circle, City Council candidate. So you did right, you left, and you came back.
I knew it was going to be a long one tonight.
I knew it was going to be a long one tonight. Mayor, Terrence and I would just like to say we're so sorry for the loss of Dot as well. If you got your spung from her, I'm sure she was quite the spunky lady. My husband, Terrence, and I have lived in Smyrna for four years, and it's a place we mutually fell in love with back in 2011, when we relocated from Greenville, South Carolina, to Atlanta. We had a vision for our future, and we felt that Smyrna's community seemed to be the perfect fit to bring that vision to life. In 2014, as you guys know, we launched our brick-and-mortar Terris Simon Studios on Concord Road. And since its opening last July, Terris Simon Studios has grown exponentially, introducing new families to the area as well as bursting, boosting, excuse me, Smyrna's curb appeal on Concord Road. Both our business and our home are located in Ward 6, so I'm fully invested in its cultural and economic development. And it would be an honor to spend my time and my energy being an advocate for the community that has given me so much already. So I would like to formally announce my candidacy for city council in Ward 6. Thank you. Oh, and as a fun side note, Thunder Gypsy, Heather Statham is a coach of mine, and she owns that band. So it's going to be great tomorrow night. Go check them out.
Terrence know about you running for council?
He's pushing me out the door, too. That's mean, and yes, he does know. He'll be out there going door-to-door with me, right, honey?
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good luck, and we appreciate your business in Smyrna. It's 11:00 now, and we're still here, so. But thank you very much, and good luck. That's where she just told him. Well, I'd like to report that ridership is down with our bikes. The three Boy Scouts, I don't know what y'all did, but don't do it again. All night long. You can, you can come up and introduce them. Yeah, yeah, that's the only way you're going to get out of here. Come on. Y'all come on up here, come up to the thing, and then, then y'all can bring the car around for the old man. Y'all come on up here. There's nobody watching. Everybody's asleep. Okay, who are y'all?
I'm Kevin McCabe. We're all from Troop 250.
At the American Legion.
At the American Legion.
Yeah. And who are your buddies?
This is Kieran.
Kieran Heine.
And Ryan Farley. And we're here for our communications merit badge.
See, that's great, isn't it?
What we were here for is that one of the requirements had us to have take notes on like an issue.
That's okay. That ain't that funny. Go ahead. Hey, you walk up a little bit.
Go up to the mic. We were here to take notes on an issue that had different opinions.
Well, you got, you picked a good meeting.
We did the first one on the zoning issue.
Yeah, it was unbelievable. Well, you know what? This is no, this is no lie. I was in the same Boy Scout troop, the American Legion troop. I think it was 156 or something, or 160. I was in, really, me and Bobby Martin. I got a picture of me and Bobby Martin at the Jamboree. They have a jamboree. They used to have a jamboree at the Atlanta Municipal Auditorium. And I'm in a, we're both in these space-age thing. I've got a Sputnik hat on, and he's got a rocket head on. I guess you had to be there. But, I mean, Boy Scouts is great. It really is, so.
We enjoy it.
Yeah, thank y'all for, you know, there's a curfew for kids your age. And just as soon as y'all leave, they're going to arrest y'all for being out too late. Thank y'all for coming. It's great.
We'll all speak positive for you. You should get that badge.
Yeah, give them a couple badges. It is, it is now 11:00. And unless there's any other, if there's no other business to be brought for this body, then I'm going to close meeting adjourned at 11:00. Thank you very much.